The May 16th, 2017 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, called to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Alderman Redpatt.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenci.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeCenso.
Here.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanar.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, if form is present.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations to start off with. First is Archie Ford and Renata Hamilton, if they're here, if they'd come forward, please.
Renata's on her way.
Renata's on her way? Okay, we'll wait. But we'll move forward, how's that? Also like to recognize Paul Schaefer. He'd like to come forward. For those of you who may not, if you weren't downtown, you missed a great event on Friday. We had the Fat Ass 5K Street Party, and then on Saturday, the marathon, the 5K, so that's open to anyone. You know, it doesn't matter what shape you're in. And that concept actually came from Paul, so we do have a recognition for him, and what's unique about this event, it's exclusive to Springfield, Illinois. And over the 10-year period, it's raised over a million dollars for charity for Springfield. And it all came from Paul Schaefer, and you know, St. Patty's Day, at one time, they all thought this up and went forward with it, and it's a great way to bring people together, raise funds, and have fun in the process. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Fat Ass 5K was designed on a napkin at the Celtic Miss Pub by Paul Schaefer on St. Patrick's Day, 2008," and that's before he started drinking, "to be an all-inclusive race, from the athletics to the couch potatoes we all know and love, and whereas this annual event has been a celebrated success, not only because of the beer, corn dog, donut, and ice cream stops, but due to the hard-working volunteers, sponsors, entertainers, and vendors who donate their services, allowing more money to be raised and donated back to charity, whereas this race has been recognized in the book The Runner Bucket List 200 Races Before to Run Before You Die, and in 2017 marks the 10th anniversary of the 5K that embraces and encourages our fat asses, and whereas in a decade, over $1 million has been donated to over 40 charitable organizations, and whereas a heartfelt thank you goes out to the thousands of participants locally and from around the state, as well as foreign countries who come to walk, run, crawl, eat, and drink for great causes, now therefore I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield and the City Council, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 13th, 2017, shall be Fat Ass 5K and Street Party for Charity Day in recognition of their great efforts, and may there be many more decades of eating and drinking our way to the finish line." So we did read this on Saturday, but I told Paul he should come up and be recognized for the great things he has done, as well as the volunteers for our city of Springfield. Paul?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say there's a lot of people who do a lot of hard work, and it wasn't just me, it was Michael Caneli, but again.
Well, thank you very much. Next, Todd Miller's here from the Sliders, if you'd like to come up, and we'd like to recognize Todd for his efforts. This is his second year of ownership with the Springfield Sliders, and he's done a great job embracing the team and working through some hardships. As some of you may not know, I know the City Council knows, we no longer have Robin Roberts Stadium, and that's part of the hurdles he's trying to deal with, is two governmental entities, and that's, I know it can be difficult at times.
One's hard enough.
Yeah, one's hard enough, but we appreciate all his good efforts, and coming up, May 31st is our home opener, and I'd like him to say a few words tonight to promote the team, and we appreciate all you do for the city of Springfield.
I appreciate it. Well, I certainly thank you for that. Man, I really enjoy Springfield, I've enjoyed my time here, same as I told the mayor when I first came last year. I'd like to stand here, and 16 years from you, so we're the longest 10-year team in Springfield history of 25 years, instead of the longest 10-year team in nine years. Now that we're moving on to our 10th season, we're really excited for that. We have a lot of great things in store for everybody this season, from promotions on down the list, to, well, we plan to just win and win a lot of ballgames, so that's going to be first and foremost for us. But really, to bring great guys into the community here, get these guys drafted, get them to the next level, that's what our whole league's about, and something I'm all about, and trying to really battle for these guys, so we're really excited about that. Hopefully, everybody can come out to a game, if you haven't been to one, you're missing out, so tell everybody you know to at least come out to one game. I know if I get you to one, you're going to come out to many more, because it's just a blast, whether you like baseball or not, we have something to keep you entertained. But certainly appreciate it, and go Sliders.
Todd? And the other item Todd's working on is other activities and events to really promote the North End and the city of Springfield, so we appreciate all his efforts in that.
I'd also like to point out, how many kids did you have drafted off last year's roster?
We have three kids drafted off last year's roster, and we've had 29 over the last 10 to nine seasons.
But three alone off of last year's, and those were your kids that you drafted?
Yep. And we will have at least a half a dozen, I would say, this season, and then probably three or four more from last team's roster that will get drafted this year.
Thank you. So to keep things moving, I'd like Archie Ford to come up, and we'll recognize Renata Hamilton as well, if I give you the certificate of honor. And last week, we had the privilege of, well, Archie and Renata had pulled together an event for veterans to help support them, and what was unique about it, not only providing support services or making veterans aware of services we provide here locally, but they also were able to bring together a lot of nonprofit organizations and other entities to, you know, set up booth space, and that's a hard effort to do, so we really appreciate what they've done. And that was the first year for that event over at the Salvation Army, the new location on Clear Lake, and they'll continue to do that. And it just reads, "Whereas Archie Ford and Renata Hamilton, and recognition for your outstanding work and impact in our community, thank you for providing essential services to our military through your work to end veteran homelessness, networking with 90% of agencies and 20% of the businesses in Springfield to meet the needs of the veterans of Sangamon County. We appreciate your continued work and supportive services for veterans' family and with the Salvation Army. Together with the Springfield City Council, we recognize your hard work, dedication, and commitment to this important initiative. Thank you for creating a home for the men and women who have proudly served our country." Thank you very much. And he's shy, because he just celebrated his 60th birthday, right?
No.
Did it win that this week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Very good. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
If you pass that on to Renata and our thanks, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, she is.
Huh, Renata? You're just in time.
She is.
So Renata was the other one, and actually, both of them helped with our Overflow Shelter as well, and has done a great job in helping in that initiative. So anything you'd like to say about the veterans' support and the SOS?
Well...
You can step up to the mic.
I'll start with SOS. It went very, very well this year. I don't know how many of you know about the Overflow Shelter and what we do, so at the Overflow Shelter, anyone is welcome there that is homeless, whether they're on drugs, using alcohol, it's just a come-as-you-are shelter. So this year, we added case management, which was not really my job, but I just made it my job, so we assisted four or five homeless people with going back home to their families. Two, the families came and got them. The other three were private donations, people that we reached out to on our own to help them get home, so that was a big accomplishment for us. We helped do disability claims. One of the homeless people that were there, their disability claim has already been approved, so that's another good thing. We helped somebody get income to help them stabilize. When we did the intakes, anyone who was not receiving food stamps at that time, we did the application right then and there to help them receive food stamps. I think we had less police calls and ambulance calls than any of the other shelters, which that's very unusual for the Winter Warming Center, being that we take people that are on drugs, using alcohol. So this year was such a great year for us. Hopefully, next year, we could train more staff and do more case management to help stabilize people, so that's on the Winter Warming Center side, and on the veteran's side, we're just really pushing. We, I currently have 39 homeless veterans on my caseload, 36 of them are housed, we have three that are waiting to be housed. We partner with Fifth Street Renaissance, and now we have bridge beds available, so instead of the veterans being on the streets or in traditional shelter, until we can get them housed, they go into a bridge bed for 90 days. So that's really good for us. Our turnaround to house someone, if they're doing what they're supposed to on their end, is about a week. So once a veteran identifies theirself, does the intake, we usually have them housed and are working on other stabilizing conditions within a week. That's about it. Thank you.
The first item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2017-004 for the property located at 1,000 and 1,004 West Jefferson, Ward 8. Petitioner is James J. Skeeter, present zoning classification S2, Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031. Requested zoning relief variance pursuant to Section 155.212. General provisions, variances in Section 155.214. Applications for amendments and variances to allow B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034. Use, storage of box trucks/ trailers in the S2 Community Shopping Office District, Section 155.031, and a variance of Section 155.112. Surfacing to allow the parking/ storing of box trucks on an unpaved surface instead of the solid, dust-free surface required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial planning, and zoning commission recommendation is concur with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission and deny petition as submitted.
I would like to make a motion to deny as submitted, but instead grant a use variance for the storage of two box trucks and a variance of Section 155.112 surfacing for a period of 36 months to allow parking on gravel surface, limited to an area for the two box trucks only, and a drive lane to that area.
Second. Been moved and seconded to amend the ordinance for a use variance for up to 36 months with unpaved surface, and also have a entryway. Is that correct?
Yes, and I would like the Alderman to know that because this was a denial, we're going to need at least seven votes to pass this. This, the variance, the use variance that was suggested came from zoning, and Mr. Skeeters has agreed to it, so I would like your support on this, please.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Is that correct? First?
The motion, the motion to, as read, to deny the petition but to grant the use variance.
Okay. So motion to deny the petition but grant the use variance. So voting is, any other discussion? Voting is now open. And the zoning passes as amended, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2017-008 for the property located at 32 Westview Lane and Ward 1. Petitioner is Raymond J. Watson and Susan M. Schwinter, Lake leaseholders. Present zoning classification R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief vary, Section 9, docs of Appendix A of the Land Use Plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow a dock to extend to a maximum point of 60 feet from the shoreline at normal full pool elevation instead of the maximum 35 feet into Lake Springfield to allow the use of a boat lift to remove the boat from the water and place the boat back into the water to allow the extension of their dock. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is concur with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation and approve the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the plan, zoning commission's recommendation.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning petition passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2017-009 for the property located at 4,700 Ash Grove Drive and Ward 10. Petitioner is Courtney K. Joyner, as contract purchaser, present zoning classification B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034. Requested zoning relief reclassification from B2, General Business Service District, Section 155.034, to R5B, General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021, and for variation of Section 155.121. Required off-street loading spaces, multifamily dwellings, to permit less than 17 loading spaces, proposing seven spaces, and Section 155.133. Size of loading spaces to allow the size of the off-street loading space to be 10-foot by 18-foot instead of the 10-foot by 25-foot length required. If such relief is granted, the ordinance granting relief is to be conditioned upon petitioner or one of the petitioner's affiliated entities obtaining a building permit for the subject property within two years of the date of approval of the ordinance granting the zoning relief, or upon petitioner's written notification to the zoning administrator within said time. That petitioner has completed the purchase of the property. If petitioner does not complete its purchase of the property within the timeframe set forth, the zoning classification shall revert to its present classification, and the variances shall not be effective. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the rezoning to R5B, but recommend denial of the requested variances. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is grant the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we grant the petition as submitted.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation to grant the petition as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the petition passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. At this time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Burscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The Corporate Fund in the month of April had a beginning balance of $5,248,877. We took in total receipts of $5,892,462. And in the month of April, our total disbursements were $7,609,296, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance of $3,532,043. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there any questions? All those, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will recognize Director Bill McCarthy, Office of Budget Management, for a brief presentation regarding city finances.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here tonight to do my traditional fiscal year wrap-up, so we'll be talking about fiscal year 17. As you all know, there is a three-month lapse period in the end of fiscal year while you're still getting expenses out the door and still collecting revenues. We've now gotten to the point where we're fairly comfortable with the numbers and believe that we'll have a fair representation of what we'll see when the audit's completed at the end of August, although bear in mind that these are pre-audited numbers, could change slightly when it's all said and done. You just gonna go? Okay. See how that works. Okay, so our key performance indicator dashboard that we typically use, in the past, we've had a little bit more green than what you see up there. Our revenues, in a word, abysmal. We'll get into that in a moment. Our expenses, we did have a positive, we did have a positive result there based on the departments recognizing the situation we were in and responding accordingly. The other KPIs that we've talked about, the end-of-year cash position, the average daily cash, and the fund balance, all neutral at this point. Reason for the neutral, as you'll see, is the levels right now are decent, but they're trending in the wrong direction, so it's obviously an area we have to monitor and continue to concern, concerned with. Next, yeah. Maybe?
Maybe.
This could be very short, Alderman. The next one's the most important slide. ISD. Where's, where's? Ken, we need some more money in ISD's budget.
Do you just want to go over the numbers?
I can, it would be, or if you want, they can work on it, we can circle back, maybe later in the meeting.
Okay.
Would that be good?
Because I think it's useful to visually illustrate.
Okay. We'll try that.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2017 City Council Meeting and approve the minutes.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading, first reading of the ordinances, into the record of this City Council meeting.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now...
Okay.
Open? Nope? Do a roll call vote, please.
Consent agenda, this for passage of the consent agenda.
Alderman Redpatt.
Aye.
Alderman Sinore.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenci.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman DeCenso.
Aye.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderman Thailand.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanar.
Aye.
Or Mayor Langfelder.
I'll vote for it, but I don't have to. I'll vote aye. Very good. Thank you very much. Agenda number 2015-121, 2015-371, 2016-328, 2016-450, 2017-041, 2017-101, 2017-102, 2017-103, 2017-152, and 2017-177 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any action on any of those? Next item on the agenda is number 2017-016, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to a programmatic agreement among the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, Illinois State Historic Preservation Office, Illinois Department of Transportation, and Advisory Council on Historic Preservation Regarding Compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act for the Chicago to St. Louis High-Speed Rail Project. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-016 on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-241, an ordinance authorizing the disposal and sale of an 18,274-square-foot excess right-of-way area at 1,900 East Truman Road to Key Properties LLC for the appraised value of $24,700 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-241 on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion, ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to give Hansen and Jim Maul and his folks a special thank you, because they paid extra attention and went out to the homeowners and explained what was going on with the property. We appreciate their time and efforts.
Very good. Thanks, Jim, and Hansen Engineers. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-245, an ordinance authorizing payment of $30,000 to Lincolnland Charity Championship for regional and local marketing and promotion of the PGA Tour Golf in Springfield, June 19th through the 25th, 2017, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $30,000 from unappropriated fund balance for the Office of Budget Management. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-245 on final passage.
Mayor, may I make a motion to take this out of order and put this to the end?
Okay.
Todd Miller with the Sliders wanted to be here to speak on this, and he left briefly to run over to get the stuff for the picture after the council, and had planned to be back, but with McCarthy breaking the slideshow, we kind of got fast.
Any objections to moving it to the end of the agenda? Very good.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number 2017-247, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $15,000. Oh, that's, I guess I need to read this into the record, too? And then move it to the end?
No, this is, this is a separate.
Oh, this is different. Okay. From unappropriated fund balance for the Special Assessment Fund, the chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-247 on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What is, what is this for, Mayor?
I think it's dealing with the, is it dealing with the previous ordinance?
No, 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 this is a different one. This is actually a cleanup ordinance from fiscal year 2017. There was a debt service payment that was appropriated, an additional payment was made, and we didn't have the appropriation authority to make that additional payment, so just a cleanup ordinance.
It's a special assessment, probably talked about.
Okay. Good. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-248, an ordinance authorizing the reapplication of existing budget authority for fiscal year 2017 for the Office of Budget Management. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-248 on final passage.
So move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Hey, can you explain this, please?
This is also a cleanup ordinance from 2017. It's a legislative transfer, allowing us to move some money from some other lines into one in order to pay the expenses associated with some various things. I think most of it's fleet-related.
So what's the effect on the budget?
There is no effect. We're just doing a legislative transfer, it's not a supplemental.
So was it allocated funds?
This is, most of it, I don't have the ordinance, but most of it is the fleet fund. It's just simply moving, we exhausted our 2% transfer ability that most funds have to move things around in order to make some additional payments, and therefore, we're just asking for a legislative transfer to do a cleanup. Let's see, I've got the numbers right here.
But as you recall, as we all recall, the budget was pretty tight this year, and I don't think that there was very many areas that was loose enough to be able to move money from. I'm just kind of concerned, because I know that we're going to be running into a deep hole here at the end of this year. I don't want to take money that is allocated for special projects or anything else out and move it into a fund just because we're going to pay the bills, so...
Right. This is a couple of things. One, this is prior year, this is a cleanup from last year, and we usually do a couple of these every year. In this particular case, it's all within Fund 16 and Fund 17. We had some facilities maintenance expenses in one particular line... We had some facilities maintenance expenses in one particular line that exceeded the 2% ability to move money around. Same thing with fleet, but in the end, there is no additional money, and both funds still are, we ended up spending less than what was appropriated by the City Council, even with the transfer.
So you're not going to come back to us later on and say, "I have to replenish the money that we took out of that fund and put it in the other fund"?
No, sir. This is again for last fiscal year, not the current one.
Okay.
Alderman Senor.
Why is there no dollar amount associated with these transfers?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Why is there no dollar amount associated with this transfer?
There should be an exhibit.
How much is that?
On the back. It's, it's, every line that's being transferred out of and into is on that exhibit.
And what's the cumulative total?
Let's see, in Fund 16, it looks like $10,000, and in the Fund 17, I'm looking at the different lines here. So we're moving money out of 1100, 1200, 1200? Where's it going? Looks like revised budget, 300, and yeah, the current budget going from 377. Let's see, what are we doing here? Current budget is, okay, so we're taking 10 out, and this is facility, this is Fund 16, so we're taking 10 out of the 1,200 lines and 10 out of the 1,400 lines, and moving that into the 1,100 lines. So it's 20,000 there, and then it's 225,000 out of various lines moved into the 1,800 lines in fleet. So 225 for Fund 17 and 20 for Fund 16. Again, not a supplemental, just moving appropriation authority around.
So any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-253, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Parvener Group LLC for assistance in acquiring the property located at 716 East Enos, utilizing Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Financing Funds in an amount not to exceed $55,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2017-253 on final passage.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman McMenamin.
I'd like to propose an amendment that relates to an earlier ordinance that we passed a month ago. A month ago, we supported the Enos Park redevelopment efforts by offering $20,000 redevelopment grants to any police or fire that would move into Enos Park TIF district. So I think it'd be appropriate to offer the same amount, in this case, $20,000, so that there's some consistency between the incentives to move into the TIF district and to purchase property within the TIF district. So I don't think we've had a chance to talk about this, but briefly last meeting at the Committee as a whole. So I'm looking for a second on this motion to revise the amount of assistance from 55,000 to help an individual purchase this building in which a restaurant would operate. I believe the fair market value is set at 135,000, so we're offering $50,000 of assistance for a property worth approximately 135,000, and this would put it on a par with what we previously offered, police and fire moving to the district.
So there's a motion to amend the amount from 55,000 to $20,000. Is there a second?
I just got, I've got a question. Is appropriate protocol for me to talk before there's a second?
Counsel.
No, the proper process would be motion, second, then debate, discussion of the motion.
Is there a second?
In other words, Chuck, you can make, say, do a second and discuss it.
Well, I might have to go against it, Joe. No?
So it dies for lack of a second. Any other discussion?
Question on the ordinance.
Yes, Alderman Redpath.
What's the magic number that brought us to $55,000, if you might?
Yes, actually, the total cost of the building was $110,000, so it's actually 50%, which is consistent with what we've done.
We have done that for other businesses in the TIF district?
Yes, we have, and we also checked the MLS to make sure that this was a comparable amount, and we do have a listing of a property that sold in the area, which it was a restaurant. It was listed for $114,900. It sold for 92,000, and when we looked at this particular property, this sales price includes all the commercial kitchen equipment, so we felt that that was comparable.
So Director, when we do this type of stuff, just like, what, what stops them from turning around and selling the property and making a $55,000 profit off of us if we give them the money to, is there a requirement for payback, or how does that work?
You know, actually, there, we have had some discussions with the Corporation Council about going forward as we give out TIF money, should the city actually retain some type of a lien on the properties. I think we will have a conversation about that. We are working on some agreements for the residential program in Enos Park and also for the first responders because we will be filing something.
And so I agree with the loaning of the money and agree, hopefully, we can make that move to, for putting a lien on the property to recover our expenses, but is it, could it be retroactive that if we gave out this money tonight, that we could go back and recover that if they did try to sell the property and make a profit?
I'm sure we can because the actual contract hasn't been signed yet for the TIF funds. So, yes.
All right, that satisfies my.
I think from a previous discussion at the Committee as a whole, the discussion was, we put a lien on the property and then it'd be forgiven over a five-year period of operation.
Thank you. That's what I was.
And may I, may I add, because this is what Director Davis was talking about earlier, the proposals that were received contemplated operating a business there. So the development agreement will be in final form to require them to operate a minimum of five years. Otherwise, it would have to be returned. And that, because there is, you know, certain concern on the part of the Director and the Mayor about you can't just simply give money for pure acquisition, there's got to be some associated economic activity. In this case, the applicant actually is going to be operating a restaurant there, and their proposal, if you saw the entire business plan that was presented to the Economic Development Commission and so on, contemplated operation and so on, so the requirement would be a minimum of five years.
Okay, thank you.
How long has the building been vacant?
It's been vacant a little over a year, we understand.
And do we know that all the equipment is functional?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman McMenamin.
Just want to make one final comment. This is a move-in ready, ready to move-in property for which TIF money was already used to rehabilitate it, and so from that point of view, this ordinance is similar to the next ordinance in that we've got a move-in ready property, and I'll be voting no on both ordinances, this ordinance and the next one, because, for a number of reasons, including also that we're, this is all acquisition assistance, allowing someone to purchase property when there's no need to rehabilitate the property, it's already in moving condition, and I think we're making a mistake of going down, offering acquisition, solely acquisition assistance for the purchase of property. I think it props up the fair market value instead of letting the market determine what the fair market value would be for the, for the building. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you know the amount that was given previously from TIF funds for the building?
Actually, what we have on our records, this property was in foreclosure, I believe, about five or six years ago, and it was purchased at that time using TIF money for about $23,000, but we don't have a record of TIF money being used to rehabilitate the building.
Any other, Alderman Senor and then Alderman Fulgenczi?
Well, I was just wondering, I know we've talked a lot about a threshold of 35% for TIF money to purchase a property or do some remodeling and so forth. Why is this all of a sudden 50%?
Well, actually, the threshold that we've used downtown has been 50%, and remembering that Enos Park is a neighborhood TIF, it's not a commercial TIF, and we were, with the Enos Park Neighborhood Association, we were reimbursing at 100% for them, and that's also what we did with the Art Association at 100%, and so we used the 50% with this one because it was a commercial business, but it is a little bit different than the commercial TIFs because this is a residential TIF, so that was what we thought was a good threshold.
I guess I don't understand the distinction between a residential TIF and a commercial TIF if they're using the money for commercial property.
Well, there's actually a difference because with the commercial TIF, which is like downtown, all of our programs there are centered around businesses and helping businesses. With Enos Park, it's a residential TIF because most of the money that goes out into that TIF is about residential properties, which are, you know, valued differently, and their rehabilitation is a little bit different.
Alderman Senor.
I'm good, thank you.
Is there anybody from Enos Park here, or do you know how the Neighborhood Association weighed in on the development?
Yes, actually, the Neighborhood Association, they have spoken with Jerome Taylor, who's the proprietor. They were very much in favor, and this proposal did pass the Economic Development Commission unanimously spoke.
Any other discussion?
All questions.
All those in favor of the motion, vote yes.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to point out, there is.
Alderman Senor.
In the, in the ordinance itself, it says Parvener Group LLC, and then on our, on our monitors, it says Parvener, so we need to make sure it's the same, that that's corrected because that was brought up last week and it had, it still hadn't been corrected. So is it Parvener or Parvener? What is it correct?
It's Parvener, and it has, last week.
It's Parvener?
It was about to legal, and we will get it changed.
Okay. Correct.
Yes.
The agreement will have the correct spelling.
So is this Parvener, P-A-R-V-E-N-I-R?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, does that require an amendment, or is that just a friendly?
It's really a Scrivener's error, a typo, so we'll correct that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-254, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with 521 East LLC for the use of central area TIF increment finance funds for an amount not to exceed $120,000 for acquisition of the property located at 521 East Washington Street. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2017-254 on final passage.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-255, an ordinance authorizing execution of Addendum E to a redevelopment agreement with Children's Museum Foundation Corporation to extend the completion date of the project to July 1st, 2018, and authorize additional central area tax increment finance funds in the amount of $130,000 for a total amount not to exceed $1,121,545 for property acquisition and rehabilitation. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2017-255 on final passage.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman McMenamin.
I voted, in the six years I've been on the Council, for yes votes for the Kids Museum. This is the second increase in the amount of city money request, and I'd like to vote yes to, there's really two aspects to this request here. It's a, it's a request for additional time to perform the redevelopment agreement, which also theoretically means additional time to raise money. That's one aspect of this, and then the second aspect is to increase the amount of city contribution, it would take it above $1 million, by another 125,000?
130,000.
130,000. So if there's a second, I'd like to make a motion to divide the question so that we can have two votes here. One vote to allow more time to perform on this redevelopment agreement, and the second, the second vote to, on the question whether more city money will go for the project.
Second.
There's a very motion, and second to divide the question from the dollar amount and the time to complete the project. Any discussion?
Yeah, question.
Is that something we can do without having to go back through the process, take it back to committee?
I'll leave that up to Corporation Counsel.
No, I, I believe that the Council, if it chooses to do so, may divide the question. That's a proper procedure under Robert's Rules of Order. So effectively, it is to allow a discussion of that there are separate topics. In this case, one, dealing with the amount, the second, dealing with the date of performance. So the motion's been made and seconded, so when adopted, it would divide the question so you'd have a debate or vote on each item.
If not adopted, it reverses back to the original ordinance.
I'm sorry?
If not adopted, it reverses back to the original ordinance.
If the, if the motion is not successful, divide the question, then it would just be voted on as is.
Any other discussion on dividing the ordinance? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
No.
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Senor.
No.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Fulgenczi.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
No.
Alderman DeCenzo.
No.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderman Tylen.
Yes.
Alderman Donaldin.
No.
Alderman Hanniger.
No.
All, all right, we have six no's.
So the motion fails. Any other discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, two voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-256, an ordinance amending Chapter 153, Section 153.106 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordances as amended pertaining to definitions of large-scale developments as amended. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2017-256 on final passage.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. There's several amendments. So the first one is an amendment. First amendment, it'd be an amendment two, right?
The, there were, there was a request for some amendments, if I might.
Sure.
You should have in front of you the amended version that came out of committee, and that's the very first page, and the reason it's not numbered is because it's already been addressed in the committee. The Mayor had requested two amendments, and then Alderman Donaldin had requested an amendment, so I just did him an order of request. So Amendment Number Two is the next page, and what I tried to do, because there, it's, to make sure that there's clarity with it, I tried to highlight what the amendment addressed. So Amendment Number Two, if you go to the second page, the highlighted sentence at the bottom addresses that, so it would be appropriate to.
Yep. The amendment, for Amendment Two, is notwithstanding any other provision, any development containing more than one principal structure for use as multifamily residential or for storage units on more than one half acre shall be considered a large-scale development. So we address each amendment.
There would have to be, there would have to be a motion, a second, then a discussion, and then you vote on each amendment in, in order.
So is there a motion to accept, and basically what this would do is make sure that multifamily residential units would revert back to the current language of the code, and the same with storage units on more than ha, one half acre.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
So exactly, what does this then do to the ordinance? If you're saying it's reverting back to the original code, how is this actually playing out? Is that basically just, if it's got more than one principal structure, it doesn't matter what the size of the lot is, and it takes out the whole ordinance then, doesn't it?
Essentially, the. Essentially, the, what we're dealing with, with the ordinance in general is just the definition of large scale. In other words, when does it start? Just briefly, the original proposal related to taking out the reference to more than one unit, leaving in the five acres, meaning anything larger than five acres regardless of type, residential office, commercial, industrial, or mobile home, would all continue through large scale. The amendment in committee changed that from five acres to 12 acres. Amendment number two, what you have in front of you, is a further definition that makes clear that in the event that it is relating to more than one principal structure, more than one half acre, and involving multifamily or storage units, so it's trying to be very specific to indicate that when it's multifamily residential or storage units, then it is going to be treated as a large scale. So, the rest of the ordinance would stay in effect relating to office or commercial and so on.
Now, is this considering then, if somebody were planning on a five-acre lot where they're going in and they're going to be putting in all duplexes, which would be multifamily, does that then mean that this subdivision that's planned for duplexes would then trigger this clause and be treated and not be exempt as the five acre would be, or the 12 acre would then make it? Because it's duplexes or it has duplexes in the plans?
If, if I might address that. The, if it's a regular subdivision, remember, there, I think there is some confusion on what a large scale is versus a subdivision, a normal subdivision. A subdivision creates separate individual lots. You know, there might be 10 lots, or it might be 100 lots, or it might be three lots. But it's dividing up a lot of which you're putting one principal structure on one lot. A large scale is keeping-
So, this would be more than in keeping with if somebody were coming in and taking a parcel of land and putting two apartment buildings?
Yes.
Rather than individual lots?
If it's individual lots, it's not a large scale.
Okay.
It's a regular subdivision. Remember, there's a whole separate section regarding subdivision. And a subdivision is you take, you know, ground and divide it into separate lots that are platted and sold. A large scale is when you have one parcel, and on that parcel are more than one principal building. And so, in the instance you referenced, Alderman, where you might have duplexes, it's, it might be some type of a perhaps planned unit development, or I'm not sure how you would do duplexes on one large lot. You might do it if you did condominiums.
Assistant living.
But in that circumstance, there's one you just described, if we're all in one lot, then it would be subject to large scale.
Okay.
Alderman Repath?
So, this doesn't affect any commercial development in that sense, if it's, it's only, it only has to be residential that's multi-un, multi-units plus storage units, correct?
The, the amendment is addressing specific multifamily residential developments and storage units that appear on one lot as defined, greater than one half acre, with more than one principal building on that lot.
If we come, if somebody comes back in with a new subdivision, a subdivision over 12 acres would be subjected, I mean, it wouldn't be subjected to the large-scale plan, correct? But the individual lots, if they came in, is there a way, is there a way to piecemeal that? I don't understand.
If, if it's a regular, if it's a regular subdivision, then large scale does not apply. It just goes through-
Well, that falls under the sublimities, isn't it?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So, this is on-
Retirement village.
Yeah.
Retirement village would fit in that, or apartment building.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, we, we know that there's different views on this ordinance, and I was wondering if, are we going to allow testimony through the amendments or are we waiting for the ordinance as it is amended? How are we going to do that?
I think we should allow testimony through the amendments.
Anybody wish to discuss or comment about the amendment with regards to apartment units Any other discussion?
Here comes somebody. Two.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Corky Joyner. I'm a real estate developer in Springfield. There is, I think, some confusion between what a large-scale technical review is, what a subdivision is, and what a zoning case is. What we're talking about tonight didn't have anything to do with zoning, didn't have anything to do with a subdivision process. It's most similar to a building permit. So, I'm going to talk about the requirements for a building permit and the requirements for a large-scale technical review because they're really similar. So, a building permit is something today that's under five acres, that is one primary structure on a property, or under a half acre and more than one primary structure. And what's involved in the building permit process is the owner of the property or the developer of the property would hire architects, engineers, professionals, people that do this for a living, to design to meet a certain set of codes that are adopted by you guys that we have to follow. The city council adopts those requirements, technical requirements. For instance, if somebody was doing a building on a lot that's, that's an acre, and we're going to disturb an acre of ground, there's a requirement through the Illinois EPA that we have to apply for a stormwater permit, okay? So, any building permit that disturbs over an acre goes to the EPA. The EPA then requires that, that we have to get checkoffs from the Department of Natural Resources for endangered species, and they also require that we have to go to the historic preservation for a checkoff there. So, there's three state agencies that we go to on anything that we disturb over an acre. If Department of Transportation has jurisdiction, we have to talk to those folks as well for approval. You guys probably know this, when we submit to the Building Department for the City of Springfield, there's a coordinator that coordinates inside the department. So, for a building permit, we have the architectural plans that go to the building staff. The building staff has a licensed architect, actually, I think Springfield has two licensed architects that work in it, along with the Public Works Department that has at least one, I think, three engineers that work in it. Those folks that you guys hire to make sure the professionals that we hire have done their job. So, our professionals have sealed the drawings, your professionals review them. So, it goes to Public Works, City Engineer, Fire Safety, Water Department, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, so on and so on. So, those departments, again, they enforce the code that you guys laid out, that you guys approved. What we're talking about in the large scale and the building permit process, the requirements are the same. The process is different. So, what we're talking about is moving the trigger a relatively small amount so some projects that have two, three, four buildings on them can go to the building permit process if we follow the rules that you guys have laid out. If you need a variance, if you need a zoning change, comes in front of you guys. If there's a subdivision, comes in front of you guys. But if we follow your rules, doesn't have to come in front of you guys because it's a technical approval. It's the size of water main, it's the size of sanitary sewer, a size of storm sewer, location of fire hydrants, pedestrian, the way they move, that's all done by the professionals, both my professionals and the professionals that you guys have hired to enforce your codes. So, that's the building permit process, up to five acres, one building. When you trigger a large scale, we design everything. We don't design the architectural, we design the engineering portion of it, the way the utilities serve the ground, the drainage, those things. That gets submitted to the Planning Commission, who then disseminates it to all the people I just talked about, except for the architects of the building department. So, it goes to the IAPA, it goes to DNR, it goes to Historic Preservation, goes to IDOT if they have jurisdiction, goes to Public Works Department, goes to City Engineer. All the same people look at it, it's coordinated by the Planning Commission. Then there's a meeting called Large Scale, the Large Scale Process. We go to that, we get notes before, and I see there are 39 seconds, we get notes before of the things they've noticed that may not be in compliance. We go to the meeting, they read those notes to us and ask if we understand what the subject to requirements are. We say we understand that those are the changes that need to be made, if there are changes, then it is approved subject to those changes. So, they're saying we now meet all the technical requirements. Then, several weeks later, it comes in front of you guys. It's a 75 to 90-day process. Then after we get finished with that, then we get to apply for a building permit and go through that whole architectural process. It's the same set of plans on the engineering side for the building permit as it was for the large-scale process. So, both technical review processes, both done by professionals. The large-scale process is a, is a long process, there are no technical changes. We're asking for no technical changes. What we're asking for is an easing of the process for a few projects that might be a little bit different in scope than the current. So, you guys have any questions to me?
Mayor? Yes, Alderman Henner?
A couple of questions. Number one, if it comes back to the council after large scale and we deny it, what, what happens? We've had litigation on that, right?
I'm not an attorney, so I'd like Gordon Gates to answer that question.
Yeah, your answer, or your question is, is an easy one, not because I have to look at case law from other districts, but because I look at case law from Springfield. I'm sure most of you folks, I don't, I don't think any of you were on the council at the time, but it's the Malding case from a few years back. That case made some, it didn't change the law, it just stated it more clearly, and it affected this city council. And what your question is, if the technical requirements are met by the developer and it comes back before the city council and a, and a political decision is made to deny it, you're going to get sued and you're going to lose. That's as simple as that. It is not, it is not a situation where you have some discretion at that point. Your discretion is at the front end when you set the technical requirements. The people get to speak at that time. You get to speak. You decide what the technical requirements are, you decide who you hire to enforce those technical requirements. But once they're met, there's really no purpose for the city council to be involved. The cases are absolutely clear. The Malding case didn't make new law, it just made it, made it very clear. It's been that way since 2006, 2007. And just to remind you, the case, the federal court ordered the city council to issue Mr. Malding a building permit. Then there was a suit for damages where the state court awarded the, a judgment in favor of Mr. Malding for $1,037 against the city. Now, you didn't end up having to pay that because of some things that don't really matter tonight, but as a matter of fact, you were ordered to issue the, by mandamus, ordered to issue the building permit, and then a judgment was entered against the city for a million bucks. So, this is no small thing. It's not a, it's not an iffy thing. It is absolute rock-solid law. And I guess, to go a little bit past your question, the reason why I'm here is, because Corky was asking me, why does this come before the city council? And the answer is, I have no idea. It makes no sense. There's no reason for you guys to be ruling or having, even wasting your time ruling on it when you have no discretion. You either vote yes, or you get sued and you lose. I mean, that's, those are the two choices you have.
What, is there, either one of you can answer this? What other cities around central Illinois have this process? Do you? And, and the other question that maybe you can answer, Mr. Gates, is with the apartment complex that, that you, the cobblestone apartment complex, would, would eliminating this stop any of the, of the people coming, allowing the people to come up and, and voice their concerns about it at any point?
Well, we're talking about cobblestones at the moment, prior-
It was just, yeah, just recently.
You mean, you want to talk about today or the one-
Oh, the one, the one, no, the one, what, I'm not sure what, I think, the one on, yeah, Yukon.
Yukon, yeah. Right. No, in that one, it's a completely different story because we needed zoning changes.
Right.
So, since we needed zoning changes, then there was a public forum, we had, everybody got to voice their opinions. And so, all the stuff that we're talking about would not apply if we needed zoning relief. The only place this applies is if the property that the developer owns is properly zoned. He bought it, property's owned, he's followed all the requirements, we're done.
Mr. Hurwitz?
I guess I'd like to get Corporation Counsel's feedback on the, what the comment, the attorney had suggested is, the way our current code's set up. The way I remember the Malding case was that the city council voted one way, and then they reversed their decision, and that's what the lawsuit was about. I don't believe it was with regards to the way the city code is currently set up. Do you recall that?
I would have to look at the Malding case, but I would just mention that the, the codes that the council does adopt are binding on the property owners and developers. So long as they follow that, generally speaking, they're going to have a right to proceed if that's the council, if they follow the rules that the council has adopted. Now, that being said, the large-scale process, although includes certain aspects of, for example, public notice and hearings and so on, but I would have to take a closer look at the Malding case. If you want a formal opinion, I'd be happy to give that to the council.
If you'd explain what our current code, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but it seemed to infer that regardless of how we vote on these potential developments, if we vote against what's currently in the code, as far as, what you're saying is, whatever is zoned properly, if we go against it, we'll get sued and we'll lose according to the city code as it's written today.
It's not just the zoning, it's the, all the large-scale and all the development issues, the plumbing, the streets, the technical requirements. So, yes, the technical requirements that you guys have imposed, if the developer has completely complied with those per your own people and it's properly zoned, it's done. As far as the law's concerned, it's done. If you vote against that, you're going to get sued, you're going to lose. The Malding case, I pulled it back out this morning and actually had a fairly long conversation with Mr. Craven, who was the plaintiff's attorney at the time. And there really is no question about it. In that case, and I don't know how the votes went, how they went, but by the time it made it to the federal court, all that we know from the case law, it's reported, it's a reported decision, a published decision, was that all the technical requirements had been met. It came before the city council and it was voted down. And the court, Judge Scott at the time, said the developer is entitled to the issuance of a writ of mandamus if it has a clear affirmative right to the relief and if the developer has complied with all the technical requirements set by the city council. Then, and this is the magic word, then the city council has a ministerial obligation to approve the proposed development. That's all it says. And I might point out, at the time, of course, it wasn't Mr. Zirkle, but in the court's opinion, she states, "The city does not challenge the developer's statement of Illinois law on this issue." I mean, it's, it was decided then, it's just as decided now. If the technical requirements have been met, all the city council has is a ministerial obligation to approve the proposed development. To us, that seems like a waste of your time to be doing ministerial things.
Alderman McMenema? I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
You know, case law, as you know, Gordon, is based on a set of facts. We can adjust the set of facts to get to a different result. I think it's incorrect to suggest that, quote, "The technical requirements are always clear cut and black and white." I don't think, for example, the Malding case had to do with any traffic study or any of those kind of gray areas where a city council might come back and say, "Wait a minute, we're hearing from neighbors that maybe that traffic study that was done wasn't quite accurate or didn't take into consideration all the factors that a good traffic study should take into consideration." Or maybe the landscaping is off by a few points, maybe they didn't calculate the landscaping correctly. And so, this city council has the authority to say, "We don't think the technical requirements were sufficiently met." And I, I think it'd be dangerous for this city council to waive its responsibility for all those kinds of situations, and that's the danger here. But other than that, I think it's great to try to eliminate bottlenecks or red tape when we can. But democracy is, is special, and I think I'm going to have more to say there when we get to the vote on it.
Yep, this is just on the amendment.
Mayor? One other question I had.
Alderman Henner?
Is there any, I asked earlier, is there any other cities or municipalities around that, that go through the same process?
Alderman Henner, first. I'm Joe Hurwitz, been in Springfield for 42 years in the development business. We've been very fortunate as a company to have developed in 28 different states. I can tell you categorically, this is the only community I've ever had large scale. We're in a situation, let me give you a, kind of a classic example. We went-
We went through nineteen months of technical review to do Wabash Commercial Park, which is one of the projects that Mr. Joyner had approved here tonight. And give you an example, the Springfield Clinic owns ten point five acres. We went through traffic studies, we went through I.D.O. permits, we went through zoning, we went through water, sewer, gas, electric, and every one of those items. For the Springfield Clinic, under today's ordinance, to now move forward with the ten point four-six acres that they bought and went through nineteen months of reviews by every professional in the state and in this community, we have to go back to large scale. So, in this situation, if the property's owned, if the property is, allows the use, and you go through with all your technical requirements, we spend an excessive amount of money to do that, coupled with the fact, then we have to wait additional ninety days. So, when you look at, and you look at the sales tax issues and property tax issues and all those issues that we're currently faced with as a community and in the state of Illinois with the dysfunction of the state, we now add another ninety days, literally from no reason other than a little bit more coordination. We're not asking for any relief on any zoning issue that always comes back to you, and we're not asking for any relief as it relates to our requirements under which we have to develop. So, if anybody's any questions to me, I'd be happy to answer.
How's this compared to other cities around, Joe?
Chuck, we don't have this, we, I've never gone through a large-scale process. We obviously go through zoning, we obviously go through building permits, but to add another ninety days in a situation like this, I've never experienced it.
Is there anybody that's got tougher criteria than we do?
Clayton, Missouri. Took me seven years there. But I won.
Alderman McMenamin?
Mr. Hurwitz?
Yes.
I spoke with a man who's doing a redevelopment project in our city, right, today. I spoke with him today, and I didn't ask permission to use his name, so I'm going to have to leave his name out of it. He's doing a ten million-plus project, and I asked him, he's about your age, got gray hair, just like you.
Old guy.
And I asked him, you know, "How many projects have you done in how many different states?" He said about a hundred and fifty projects in about twenty different states, and he said the process in Springfield is fair, it's what you expect when you come in, and he thought it was a, he's past the large-scale development phase, they're now moving into the permit, building permit phase. At their election, they waited four months between those two points of time because they get everything lined up for everything outside the four walls, and now they're getting ready to do everything within the four walls. And so, there's a difference of opinion about what you just stated.
And I disagree with your position. Correct.
I'd just like to close with the amendment that's on the floor. The technical requirements don't discriminate between uses. It has nothing to do with zoning. If it drains correctly, if it's served by water, sewer, all that stuff, it doesn't matter what the use is, so I would ask you to consider that, please. Thank you.
Anybody other wish to discuss the amendment with regards to multifamily residents and storage units? Yes. If you'd please come forward and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Kirk DeWees, seven sixteen South Douglas, Springfield. This discussion was very enlightening to me. In fact, this whole issue kind of was sprung to the extent that I don't think some of our neighborhood associations and other people involved in protecting neighborhoods really had an opportunity to really evaluate this. But I have a question about the amendment and why it's just focusing on storage and multifamily units. I mean, it seems like there are other types of developments, either industrial or manufacturing, you know, gambling facilities and parks, a lot of other things that could be fairly large-scale, that could be in close proximity to schools, to churches. We had an experience in our church, it's in the county, it's not in the city, where there were developments right across the street that were really unfavorable. And so, I'm not quite sure why we're just looking at storage units or warehouses. I may have something to say otherwise when you get to the final passage of consideration, but I just don't, I don't understand why it's those limitations.
The reason I selected those two is because I've served as a president of Neighborhood Association. I've been involved with city government a long time, and the two projects that, well, the Dave Malding case with storage units, and the other one is apartment complexes. So, really, when you're talking about zoning, if it's zoned already for businesses, I think that should go forward, but when you're talking density of, you know, it has an additional drain when you're building apartment units on the sewer system, things of that nature. And so, that's why I brought forward those, that particular amendment, but any alderman can bring forward any other type of structure, but those were the two that I was concerned with from past experiences. Any other discussions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
This is for amendment two?
Right. Dealing with the multifamily residential units and storage units.
Can somebody clarify what everybody's voting on, because I'm not sure if you have enough?
Amendment two, which is, notwithstanding any other provision, any development containing more than one principal structure for use as multifamily residential or storage units on more than one half-acre shall be considered a large-scale development. And the amendment passes eight voting, Alderman, oh, he's out. Eight voting yes, one voting no. Amendment number three, that pertains to changing it from twelve acres back to five acres, which was the original draft ordinance. So, is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Who's, who made the motion?
Oh, is there a motion for the five acres?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Amendment number, well, I guess I should, we can't discuss it then, right? Correct?
You can discuss it, you know, in the context of the entire ordinance. If there's an argument or anybody can, you know, bring a point up.
Amendment number four, that the Office of Public Works shall provide a regular report to the city council stating the number of building permits applied for by ward and establish a procedure for posting such building permit reports on the city's website.
So moved.
Second. It moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. Did we have a timeframe in mind for regular? Is this something that would be appropriate for monthly or quarterly or?
I'd ask Director Mahoney to come up. I think it probably pertains to City Works or what's our capability of providing the information right now online.
Mayor, while he's on his way up, is it okay if I explain why I brought this forward? Some have spoken about the, you know, the importance of having the public involved, and the logic behind this is, quite frankly, there's a lot of building permits that are applied for presently under present code that we as aldermen learn about, you know, after the fact, if somebody's asking us, and it's at no fault to any money. This, the purpose of the amendment is to make sure that the council members have the ability to learn about building permits that are applied for, and as well as the public have the ability to learn at the earliest phase possible, not when it's approved, but when it's applied for, to get a, basically a report that says, you know, where and what's going on on a particular property. I will note one thing regarding the amendment, there is this, I believe, a scrimmer's error up in the definitions line. I think that should be, still be twelve acres, not five.
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, the amendment, the amendment only is pertaining to what's in yellow.
I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Ash Alderman, they're already online. You can go on there, look at the permits, and it tells you the status and the comments. It's a little bit cumbersome, but with City Works, we're trying to improve it, so it's a little more user-friendly. But you can look at it, we actually had a discussion, I think, a week or two ago about making sure it continues to be updated, as well as we can easily provide you, if you want an overall report of how many building permits, the type of permits, just kind of a general report, it's pretty easy to do, we can give you that as well.
Well, the amendment provides the department the flexibility to come up with something that makes sense and not to tie, not meant to tie your hands, but certainly wanted to sit down and talk with you about that if this is fortunate enough to be asked.
Sure.
The main thing is, I wanted to make sure that the public were, public and the council were aware of it early on.
Are the ones that are online now, is that, say what ward it is? I mean, do you have a group by ward?
It's not by ward. Once we move into City Works, it should be pretty easy to do. I'm not sure how we could do it now, but I can look and see.
Sure. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind getting, I guess you'll call.
So, is it, I'm sorry.
Alderman Turner?
So, is it, so what you're asking for in the amendment, it's already happening?
There is online, you can go look at the permits and what they are in the process, you know, the inspector does their inspections, it's, and it'll tell, give their comments, those kind of things.
So, actually, what you're providing online now is, is actually more than what's being asked for in this amendment?
I believe, I'm not going, we've had some problems with the system, and it's a little bit cumbersome to find things on it.
But I mean, in theory, it is.
Yes, and we're trying to improve it.
So, do you still want to do your amendment?
Yeah, I think, I think it just makes it clear that we want to make sure that the council and the public are made aware, and we're certainly working with the department on ironing out these stops in the road, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh...
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, Mark, one more last question. Sorry. So, how soon, when a permit is applied for, is it posted on the website? Do you know, an average time is a day or a week?
Usually, it comes in through our building department. I want to know, Diane, she's responsible for sort of coordinating it, depending what it is and how big the project is and it's centered around to the inspectors it has to go to or the reviewers, it's usually put on immediately, so. I shouldn't say, you know, but within a day or two, I would think, with the latest.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider amendment number two.
You have to finish with four, please.
Any other discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman McMenamin?
Regarding amendment number four, I'd like to make a motion to amend amendment number four to add the words after the word "regular" at least monthly, so that it would read that the Office of Public Works shall provide a regular report at least monthly.
So, provide a monthly report to the city council?
At least monthly.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Any discussion on the amendment as amended? Make it a monthly?
At least monthly.
At least monthly.
Any other discussion? Although, anybody want to discuss that amongst the audience? Very good. Being no discussion, the voting is now open.
Mr. Mayor, may I vote on the amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
First, first order of business would be to vote to include reference to monthly.
Monthly.
So, that would be the first vote, and then the vote on the amendment as modified.
Okay. So, this is voting on the term to provide the report at least monthly.
Yeah, the only thing we're voting on is this section three, correct?
Yes.
So far.
The voting is now open.
This is to amend the amendment.
That passes ten voting yes, none voting no. So, the modified amendment, any discussion on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we can reconsider amendment number two.
We have to finish number four first.
You have to finish with four.
I thought you just did.
No. Chuck, I'll tell you when we're done with four.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. All those in favor of the amendment number four as modified? And that passes ten voting yes, none voting no.
Okay, Chuck.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider amendment number two.
Second.
It moved in second to reconsider amendment number two regarding the multifamily residential and storage units. Do you care to add something to that, or?
I'm going to move to withdraw it. If, what's the proper way to do that?
If the, if the motion to reconsider is adopted, that brings the amendment back for discussion and for further action.
Okay.
Just in a parliamentary way, if you make a motion to reconsider it's seconded, it's adopted, that brings this amendment back as if it's then to be debated.
To be discussed.
Yes.
All those in favor of bringing it back for discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Can you get a second?
Donlan did.
Roll call vote, please.
For the reconsideration, this is a roll call?
Yep.
Corporation Council, since I was, since I voted on the non-provailing side, am I allowed to vote on the reconsideration?
You may, only a, only a party who voted on the prevailing side can make the motion or second it. You are allowed to vote on the principal motion. You may not make it or second it.
Thank you.
Alderman, ready to pass?
Aye.
Alderman, senior.
Tell me what we're doing.
We're voting to reconsider amendment two.
To take, to take it out, to remove it.
For reconsideration or withdrawal.
To re-vote on it. Okay.
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenczyk?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman DeCinsa?
Aye.
Alderman McMenamin?
Right.
Alderman Tyler?
Aye.
Alderman Donlan?
Aye.
Alderman Hannah?
Aye, aye, aye.
Very good. So, any discussions? This is, what's the motion for amendment two?
The motion now is to reject amendment number two.
To just call the vote for it and re-vote, or do you want to actually try to withdraw?
To withdraw it.
To withdraw it, thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second to withdraw amendment number two?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there, what's, I'm just asking, what's?
A vote to, in the affirmative, a vote to yes is to withdraw the amendment, which was to add the provision regarding multifamily residential units and storage units that would make them be considered large-scale development.
So, you don't want them to be considered large-scale development now?
Alderman Senior?
So, we will be voting to withdraw amendment two and incorporate amendment four into the original ordinance, correct?
We're getting there.
No, we're getting there, we're just doing our...
We're just, we're focusing on amendment two.
We're just going to do a way with amendment two, is that correct?
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to withdraw amendment number two. Voting is now open. And the amendment is withdrawn by a vote, nine voting yes, one voting no.
So, Corporation Council, we are currently sitting at the amended ordinance from committee with the addition of amendment number four only?
Right. So, the original is twelve acres, that was the original amended ordinance, original amendment, ordinance submitted was five acres. It was amended at council as a whole, moving it up to twelve acres, and the additional amendment is to, for Public Works to provide a monthly report to the city council with regards to the building permits applied. So, is there a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
It moved in second, discussion? At this point, is there individuals from the audience that would like to come up and speak to the ordinance? You'd state your name and, well, I think we know you, but...
To be clear, the motion is to adopt the ordinance with the amendments, the amendment number four and the committee amendment.
Yes, sir.
Which is twelve acres.
I'm Carol Niedler, I live at twenty sixteen South Fourth Street. I'm speaking for Springfield Icon, inner-city older neighborhoods. I'm asking you to change your mind about this hastily conceived idea to help large-scale developers by increasing the size definition of large-scale development. Icon has consistently promoted effective city planning. We do that because we want the city to avoid sprawl that stretches our already limited tax dollars for infrastructure, police, fire, leaf and branch pickup, and snow removal, to support District one eighty-six schools by placing new development within its boundaries, and to promote responsible infill on vacant lots. This change you've proposed would tend to work against those ideas. This change you've proposed would tend to work against those ideals. But even more importantly, it would eliminate opportunities for public input. We changed, the change you proposed would allow the equivalent of a Walmart supercenter to be placed anywhere it would fit within the city without a word of public input. Neighborhoods and you, who we have elected to speak for us, would be denied the ability to oppose changes that could negatively affect our quality of life and our property values. We're not against development, but we are against development that potentially harms our city and our neighborhoods. We believe there are better ways to support development other than eliminating public input. Please vote against this extreme change to the definition of large scale development. Thank you.
Any other audience members wish to address the council? If you'd please come up, state your name and address, we'd appreciate it. Mm-hmm. Sure.
Kirk Dewey, seven sixteen South Douglas Avenue. Um, I have a, just a principal concern, especially based on the discussion about the discretion that the city council has, um, if zoning is already achieved. Uh, and that is that if you have a project for which there is rezoning or a variance that would be, uh, needed for that project to continue, it seems as though there ought to be a restriction or a limitation on those kinds of projects encroaching on or involving the demolition of residential property. I mean, I think there's the potential for a large scale project to encroach on that and want, if they meet the technical requirements, uh, except for the zoning, uh, then the only relief that we have possibly is that the zoning here, it seems as though, rather than put somebody through the process of, of meeting all the technical requirements, uh, they should know that that's not an appropriate, uh, location, appropriate project, uh, because it's in conflict with neighborhoods or with residential areas. It seems like that could be a real potential here, especially on the perimeters of some of our neighborhoods that either abut some, uh, farmland or where you have projects, where you have, uh, homes that are falling into disrepair. And all of a sudden, it looks like an economic development project will supersede what is the residential character of an area. So it seems the, though at the front end, we should be looking at, uh, the concerns of the residents rather than at the back end uh, after the project is technically, uh, satisf- meets satisfactorily the technical requirements.
I would just like to respectfully respond to the two concerns. The Walmart won't fit on twelve acres, it's a zoning use, I, you know, recognize that that could be a hot button, but Walmarts are thirty, forty acre deals, they're, they're very large. As it pertained to Mr. Dewey's comment about the residential part, you can't apply for a building permit or large scale, but a building permit or a large scale until the zoning is actually in place. The zoning has to be there first, and then you go through that process. If you apply for a permit, the zoning department bounces it right back, so I just wanted to make sure and clear those up. So you might have any questions for me, any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the audience wish to address the council on this matter? Any discussion from the council? Alderman McMenamin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer to an email that Paul O'Shea wrote today that, uh, he's placed his support for the Icon, inner city older neighborhood position on this. That he thinks the public input is positive and the process of getting all the, uh, technical persons in the same room early in the process is a, is a, is a good thing. I went back and asked, uh, the Regional Planning Commission to, to do some research on how many large scale development plans they reviewed in the last six years, and they reviewed approximately seventy. And of those seventy, only ten were over twelve acres. So basically what that means is that most everything that's, um, that we're now taking out of large scale planning process is currently in large scale. In other words, most of our projects are under twelve acres. And I, so what we have has really worked well from my observation on six years on city council. I think the public input is very positive. I think we're getting that. I also think that, uh, this has, and I agree with Carol Needler, that this review of amendment has taken place very quickly without enough notice out there. Because the ordinance we looked at last week was five acres or less would escape the large scale review process. And then it was amended last week to twelve acres, which is a very significant change, but the public didn't really know enough about it. And so there's been inadequate time to respond, and particularly last week, we had a long council meeting, tonight we're having another long council meeting. I think we're acting rash on this. I think it'd be good to, to slow this process down. And, uh, the most important point though is that our neighborhoods that are along the commercial quarters, they need an opportunity to speak up. Developers come and go. They can come into town and then they leave, or they can come into a neighborhood and then the project is done. But the neighborhoods stick around for, for decades, and we want to get that neighborhood input, so. Uh, it looks like I might be the only no vote on this, but, uh, it's, it's a sad day for Springfield, um, if we move in this direction. And where we have a process that allows the, uh, elimination of the public input.
Alderman Tyler?
If I may, I don't know if this would be Nate, Mark, Matt, or a combination of all three of them, but basically what I'm looking at here and the questions which I asked of staff when this ordinance came up, because I have to confess that in the beginning, when this first came forward, even last Tuesday at committee, I didn't completely understand what it was trying to do. And I continued to ask questions, trying to see what was it removing from the process? And my understanding right now, and I'm, I'm hoping I've got a good grasp of it, is that we're trying to remove a duplication of vetting the properties. We're not taking away public input where they would still be able to come in and file against a zoning petition or against a variance or against the granting of, you know, the building permit process, which right now, the permit process is in-house with zoning at, from what I understand. And the public doesn't really get to do anything with that. Where the public is involved is what the zoning of the property is, if the property is getting rezoned or if there is a conditional permitted use or a variance that comes up for the property. And in all of those cases, the public will still have their voice and still have every step of the way that they have now. The difference is, is that instead of doing twelve months worth of this to get to here and then start over and do it again for seven more months, we'll do twelve months of this, everyone gets their say, and now we go. Is that an accurate description from our Public Works staff? All the experts still have to weigh in, all the voters, all the processes still have to be handled, all the Ts have to be crossed, all the Is have to be dotted.
I think the, the one area that's different is with the developers agreement and the impact of that, if you want to comment on that.
That's correct, uh, as part of the requirements of large scale development, we require right of way and, and the adjacent substandard roadway improvement agreement are, are met. Uh, however, the, the public will not necessarily have a say there in the building permit process, and if the large scale is eliminated, uh, then, then they will not have that say at that time.
And then if we adhered, adhere to the five acres, uh, does the developers agreement, uh, is that with regards to streets, is that impacted with regards to that? As much? You know, as far as the five acres versus twelve acres?
Yes, that would be impacted.
I thought with the five acres, just to explain why we got to this point, real quick, we had a meeting with developers. Thanks to Alderman Redpath, we appreciate, you know, bringing the, the group together because we want to hear concerns out there of what's timing, permitting process, uh, development, things of that nature. One of the things that came up was with regards to large scale development. At that point, we had said, well, five acres seem like the bar in the discussion, I'm pretty sure I had said that. Will five acres, uh, appease mostly projects? And the answer at that point was yes. And so we did our, uh, research and sixty percent of the large scale projects over the last, from two thousand and eleven, six, uh, sixty percent roughly, uh, will fall into that five acres. At least forty percent or twenty fi- uh, twenty-four would go to large scale. Ten of those would be greater than, uh, twelve acres. So four, we'd catch fourteen additional ones. So that's why we, I came forward with the ordinance as is. And at that point, the discussion with Public Works is everything was fine, moving ahead, but we're caught up, the administration, me personally, we're caught off by the amendment of twelve acres. And in later discussions, just as of yesterday, this comes up with regards to developers agreement on the streets and the impact it has on the, uh, street process. So if you'd elaborate on that, I think it's very important because what I'd prefer is go back to the five acres. Let's reevaluate it in six months or a year and see where things are, and then work out the kinks in the process. I think it's a drastic change, you know, we're going from ground zero all the way to twelve acres. That's, uh, pretty extreme in my book. So if you'd elaborate on the developers agreement and what twelve acres does pertaining to that?
Well, only ten, we would only be able to get the developers' agreement executed if it were over twelve acres as per the code, if, if we changed the code to the twelve acres. However, if it were five acres, then that would add an additional fourteen, uh, to that. Uh, the developers' agreement is, um, money that we receive to help, uh, upgrade substandard roadways along the developments.
Any questions on that? Alderman Fulgenczi?
Are there any steps in the process, uh, between five and twelve acres? Or anything you go through in zoning or permitting process that would address what you're talking about now?
I believe you could modify the building permit code to address that.
So we'd have to come back with another ordinance to address the deficiency?
So what you're saying is that all we'd have to do to modify the thing, to apply for the, uh, to follow what you're talking about now is just change the requirements from five to twelve, change some, uh, wording in the developers' agreement?
Yes, that's an option.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman McMenamin?
So what I understand you're saying, Nate, is that currently we can compel developers to make public improvements if it's a large scale project?
Well, they, as per the code, they have to basically either do improvements or provide funding for road improvements that are specifically uniquely attributable to their development. And that's what's in the land subdivision ordinance, which the large scale is a part of.
So if we pass this ordinance as currently amended, we take developers, we reduce their responsibility for making public improvements when their project impacts public roads and sidewalks and such?
It's possible. But they may have to do them based upon the traffic analysis upfront, too. And it, they may not necessarily be along an adjacent substandard roadway as well.
Alderman Fulgenczi?
So anywhere in the permitting process or anywhere in the review process, uh, zoning, for example, uh, we could require the developers to upgrade the roads or something to the standard they need to affect the traffic?
Uh, in regards to their traffic analysis, uh, they may need to do upgrades. Otherwise, if we are doing it as a larger project, they would have to pay their specifically uniquely attributable portion. Or give us a letter of credit in order for whenever we did that.
So we wouldn't be able to require them to do that at zoning or permitting process?
That's up to you guys.
But as it stands right now, we wouldn't be able to require it?
That's correct.
I, I'd say it's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a yes or no?
Yes. If it's over, if it's, if it's under the twelve acres.
How many areas in Springfield could be identified where there could be possibly large scale developments to go into? How many areas are we talking about that would fit, that are currently bare, that would be open to a large scale development?
I do not have that number in front of me, but I can get that for you.
I mean, is, are we talking about a lot of areas? Because within the corporate boundaries of Springfield, this may not live, I mean, this may not pertain to very many areas that we're talking about.
Well, here's where-
It depends on how it develops, too, and how various areas-
We'll have some large, eleventh streets being open, there's large tracks along there, Stanford's being open, there's large tracks around there. The peripheral of Springfield, um, I think someone mentioned, uh, you know, if there's large, you know, I think gentleman here talked about housing, you know, dilapidated housing, you know, vacant lots, they can be combined and turned into-
Oh, we're talking about undeveloped areas, aren't we talking about undeveloped areas? We're not talking about areas that are already developed with houses on them. I mean, I'm asking a question.
We, we're, we're talking about both. If there's a larger developed area, they combine, combine a lot, or combine a lot of lots and do a larger, a larger development, then it could be.
The Kmart property, redevelopment there, that was a large scale development?
This is TJ Heaviside, our development engineer.
Step up to the mic, please.
The, uh, the Kmart, the just redevelopment, that went through as a large scale development because of the size of the parcel.
How many acres was it?
Um, I'm not sure, it was over five.
Less than twelve?
Yeah, it was less than twelve. Yeah. And the only other thing I would add about the large scale is that it, under the ordinance, um, it is defined as a type of subdivision. So that's what brings in the developers' agreement. Within our subdivision ordinance, it brings in this, uh, adjacent substandard roadway improvement. So if the large scale is taken out of the subdivision ordinance, that's why it would no longer fly.
Alderman McMenamin?
A good example, Nate, would be the Hy-Vee development where we added turn lanes, improved turn lanes, improved Cherry Road. Another possibility along MacArthur Boulevard would be the, uh, the Carisotus Theater where if there's going to be impact on the side road and along the curb, there's potential there for contribution from the developer.
Well, that would be done through the traffic analysis, but that's not actually the adjacent substandard roadway improvement agreement because, uh, that road is wider than the three lane section that we require for the, for the minimum standards.
Cherry Road is a better example, then?
Uh, Cherry Road would be, yes, a better example, if it were an arterial, but I do not believe Cherry Road is an arterial. However, they did the upgrades themselves upfront, so they didn't actually have to bond any improvements for that.
Alderman Turner?
Isn't there a way or a mechanism to capture the essence of the developers' agreement within the parameters of the twelve acres? I mean, everybody's talking about, and I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, but everybody's talking about the developers' agreement like it's, it's this thing that can only be attached to the original ordinance and the five acres. Isn't it something that the essence of it can be mandated within the, the, um, ordinance as amended?
I would have to, for-
The, uh, the council is well within its authority, and this was one of the topics that has been talked about the last couple of days, is depending on where this ends up, it may re, basically require a re, uh, rework of the permitting process to include that condition. And that's something, in fact, Nate and I were talking about this afternoon. So, uh, what was likely to happen would be, depending on where this ends up, uh, to have a follow-on set of amendments to address some of these issues uh, so that, uh, there's not gaps, uh, being created.
Which I think was the plan all along, that this was a first step in the process of trying to enhance growth in Springfield. And that we do need to make changes to the, to the, uh, the process completely across the board. And you agree with that, Nate, because you need to, you know, we keep running into roadblocks. People don't want to build here. They want to build somewhere where it's easier to get through the process, and that's what we got to change.
I think, uh, we're in agreement on that, but we want to make sure we don't let out the horse out of the barn and, uh, and we want to make sure that the changes, if we have to come back with ordinances, they should go hand in hand.
I understand.
We shouldn't pass one and then, then come back and try to pass something else, and it, it may not go. I mean, that's the difficulty in this whole process. That's why the logical choice is to have it at five acres, do the workout with the permitting process, figuring in the, um, developers' agreement, working all that out, and then doing it right as opposed to just jumping it up to twelve acres. I'd ask Corky Joyner, he'd like to say a few words, I think, on the- I'd ask Corky Joyner, he'd like to say a few words, I think, on the-
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and Nate, you can stay up there if you want to tell me I'm wrong, but, one, the developers' agreement, if it's built any road, it's news to me. It's been around since 1999. It only qualifies, I don't want everybody to think that every time a building permit comes up, there's a developers' agreement. It only qualifies, and it should be called the substandard roadway agreement because we didn't agree to it. But it only qualifies on undeveloped ground that is adjacent to a substandard road. So, for instance, if you bought a lot in Happy Landing, you buy a lot in Law Bash Commercial Park, if you develop a lot, it doesn't apply. If you buy a lot that's on a state route, it doesn't apply. If you have to do something that triggers a traffic study that doesn't have anything to do with this, and they say you got to do it, you got to do it. So I don't think the developers' agreement, again, it's on the other side, but I don't think that that is a huge trigger in this because it's only if it's an undeveloped piece of property on a substandard roadway. But I do believe that the development community would be okay with it over twenty-something years or almost twenty years. We've gotten pretty used to that language. I don't know that anybody would be against a trigger, saying if you're on undeveloped land adjacent to a road, you have to participate in that. Thing we'd like is actually to build the road so we get the benefit of it if we have to put the money in. And I'm sorry that I stepped in front of the microphone. I'm happy to answer any questions relates to that, if anybody has any-
I think on the developers' agreement, from what I heard, it needs to be revised.
Absolutely. It needed to be in 1999 when they passed it.
Right.
Thank you.
Those work to be done. Alderman Fergenti?
It sounds to me like we need to hold this off a week or two until everybody can get everything worked out and then come back with something that everybody agrees on.
Director Davis, isn't there a comprehensive plan being worked on right now that deals with sectors of the city?
Yes, we're in the process of finishing that up, and it should be completed in about ninety days.
And what exactly will that outline as far as?
Actually, with that plan, it's all about land use in the city, and we've divided all the city into different sectors, and we're making notes about some of the development areas and what we'd like to see in those areas, so.
That's what the regional planning will use for recommendations with regards to how they're zoned.
Yes.
You know, they'll identify industrial areas or business areas, residential areas. That's what the comprehensive plan will outline.
So if we had a city planner, all this would be taken care of, we wouldn't be having this discussion now, correct?
No, that's not correct because regional planning is our city planner. We have a staff of how many over there working on this?
About six of them.
Yep. I appreciate your diligence and persistence. So, Michael Higgins, if you'd like to state something?
Michael Higgins, 1808 Dow Court, President of MacArthur Boulevard Association. Now, I don't have too much input to put on this, other than from a point, my point of view in talking to the chamber and polling outside of business people who wanted to come in here and develop, chamber said most of those people have favorable comments to make about Springfield and the ease of development. I know when AT&amp;T, when that property had to be ready, shovel-ready, ninety days by the city, you know what? AT&amp;T, the city got it done in ninety days, and AT&amp;T developed. So Hy-Vee goes in MacArthur Boulevard, I don't think they had too many problems with the city. So when we talk about development of the city and bringing outside developers in, I think when, I think that we overexaggerate how hard it is to develop here. Maybe local developers have different issues, understand, but outside developers seem to get along pretty well. Our concern on MacArthur Boulevard is, yes, we have Hy-Vee, and I don't know if this is true or not, but there is a rumor the Town and Country is for sale, and we would like to have public input to see how that man's developed.
Where'd that rumor come from?
What?
Where'd you hear that from? Town and Country's?
Just heard it. Rumor out there. I've said it was rumor. I didn't say it was fact.
I thought there was a sign. Isn't there a sign out there?
I don't know.
I think there's a sign.
So we have a concern about how, and that acreage is more than five acres. If Hy-Vee was over seven acres, that acreage is more than five acres. So we have a stake in how, we want to see MacArthur Boulevard develop, and we want public input, and I want to know where the public input begins and where it ends and where we can't make any more comments.
So any other questions?
All questions.
All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-257, an ordinance authorizing a three-year extension of an integrated supply agreement between Motor Parts and Equipment Corporation, doing business as Napa Auto Parts, Napa, and the City of Springfield, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $4,994,000 from March 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2020, for the Office of Budget Management. Chair Lentertain motioned to place agenda number 2017-257 on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, is there an amendment that's been offered tonight? Maybe we need more time on this. Last week, at the committee, the whole we discussed, I think Alderman Redpath mentioned it and others agreed with it, that we should, if we pass this, it would be with the amendment that a bidding process would commence within a certain amount of time.
Okay. What amount of time was that?
I thought it was when we, upon passage, we'd have the RFP put together, but I know that's a longer process, Mayor, but obviously, I don't know that we want to put this, if we're in a bind that we got to buy parts, obviously, we got to do something. But we have to have an agreement that we're going to put the RFP process in place. That's very important because I don't want to vote for this contract because it was not bid, and, you know, when you come down to it, it's, we need to have a bid proposal before we move forward, but tell us what kind of bind we're in here, and we'll make that decision now, I guess. But I know that, I don't want to speak to the rest of the council, but I want to see RFP process go into place because this is not some, you know, I'm concerned that, is this an extension of the contract or is this a new contract? Because if it's an extension on a contract, why did it increase $1.24 million? That's-
Director McCarty?
This is an extension, Alderman, of the contract. When the original contract was passed, it had the provision in there allowing for an extension. And the purpose for the extension, quite honestly, was that all along, we knew it would take two to three years to work out all the kinks for Napa to become familiar with our inventory, for us to go ahead and get rid of all the old obsolete inventory that Napa inherited and managed for us on our behalf at no charge. In fact, that process is just getting finished up. We have about $60,000 or so worth of old obsolete parts that Napa had inherited from our old garages. And having all of those parts, it was great that Napa would go ahead and manage them and hand them to us free of charge, but it did take up a lot of room in our parts room. So one of the things that I asked Napa to do, sir, was to go back and look at their performance over the last six months so I could report it to the council. And their on-demand availability has increased from seventy-five percent to eighty-four percent over the last couple of years as they gain more space and become more familiar with our inventory. And ninety-five percent of their parts that they purchase are actually locally sourced. All of the things that the previous council discussion were concerned about have been met. We are more than happy to do an RFP. That certainly isn't a problem. I had indicated in a letter or memo that I wrote that we understand the council's concern, and we're certainly happy to do that. But we did feel it was necessary to point out why we had built the extension in because we really don't have a full contract evaluation of Napa and their performance because it did take three years to work through all of the wrinkles. And if we do an RFP and we do end up with another provider other than Napa, obviously, we'll be going through that process again with a different provider, which is fine. We're happy to do it if that's the council's wishes. But those are some of the things, the disruptions that you have to work through, and one of the reasons why we built one extension into the original contract, to do a full, I think, five or six years before we made the decision to go out and do an RFP.
So why did we wait till the end of the contract to impose the extension? Why wouldn't that have been brought to us maybe six months prior to this so we can prepare for the RFP?
Right. There were a couple of issues there, sir. Number one, as I explained last time, there was some confusion. We knew all along that it was a three-year contract, but in knowing that, and knowing that the consolidation didn't take effect until November of 2017, our assumptions all along, and I went back and even talked to Mike Palazzolo, who used to be the fleet manager for Tim Weir, who is in the audience if anybody wants to ask him some questions, he himself thought it had gone until November. We discovered a few months ago that, in fact, it was dated May 1st, backdated way back when, and so we brought it to the attention. At that point, we started having internal discussions with the mayor's office and others on what to do. On one hand, there was the improving success of Napa and the disruption, concern over the disruptions that would occur since the garage is just now, for the first time, getting fully staffed and getting the full availability of the parts room. We're starting to really turn some equipment around, which is great, and there was concern over the disruption that changing would cause. But at the same time, there was also concern about, we understand the council's discussion last time, Alderman Turner and others, and when we had this a few years ago, about the desire to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to look at this and potentially bid on it. And one of the things that the mayor directed is that we look into providers of this type of service. And so Tim and I spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of months extensively researching the availability of entities or organizations that do this type of parts-supply business in-house. And quite honestly, after talking to a number of different cities from all across the country and even some up in Canada, we really only found two. One is Napa and one is a company called Mancon. We would expect those to be the two primary bidders on an RFP. Certainly, O'Reilly has expressed interest in the past, but we haven't found any place where they have this type of an operation. Not saying it doesn't exist, we just haven't found it. We did talk to Louisville, Kentucky, who did an RFP recently for this type of service, and they ended up going through the whole process, got several bids. O'Reilly did inquire but did not bid on their RFP, did not put in a proposal, and in the end, it came down to Napa and Mancon, and they ended up staying with Napa. So again, we understand the concerns. We have concerns on both sides, pros and cons, and we're happy to do whatever the council wishes for us to do. And if the council wishes for us to do an RFP in, say, a year, or as Alderman Thailand suggested, maybe six months after Director Mahoney takes over fleet, after he's had time to evaluate it, we're certainly happy to do that, whatever you wish.
Alderman Thailand?
I was just going to ask about-
Aaron McMenamah?
What timeframe would it take for you to put together an RFP and put it out?
For something of this magnitude, it would take probably a couple of months or so.
So if, for example, if you were given three months to post an RFP, would that be doable or would it need six?
To post it, to get it on the street? We could probably have one on the street in three months.
And then the time for consideration?
But then you have to evaluate them and you have to probably do, we probably have to have discussions internally about how we would, let's say we did the evaluation, Alderman, and it came in and was evaluated a different company, then we would, although we'd been doing it all along, we would really have to look heavily at how we would do the transition. And that's really the trickiest part in all of this because we would have to empty out a parts room, and the city then would have to acquire the inventory, the non-Napa inventory from Napa, which right now is about half a million dollars worth of parts that we would have to purchase outright as part of the dissolution, and that is in the contract. So we'd have to navigate through all of that. We'd have to navigate how to get them out, get the other company in with all of their parts while trying to have as little disruption as possible to the overall operation with our two shifts. And that would take some planning. So between an RFP and an evaluation and an actual change-out, we could probably do it in six months or less, would be my guess, somewhere in that ballpark.
Thank you.
Alderman Anar?
Mayor, I've gone on in the past about the need for procurement reform throughout the city. My concern is, is we have, this isn't, this is just another example of a large contract that doesn't get rebid. It just, it comes back through us, and, you know, they have extensions and that, which is fine under an emergency situation, but we've got contracts all over the city with the utility, and I know Doug's going to have a heart attack back there, but we have large contracts, over a million dollars, quite a few that they get bid once and they just keep extending, year after year after year. And I really think that we need to look as a council or have Sandy and your staff look at trying to find a threshold where after the, after, if they have a five-year contract, it has to be bid. You know?
Right.
I just want to point that out, and I know you've been good about some of the other procurement requests that I've asked for, and I think that that's something that definitely needs to be looked at, whether it's a million-dollar threshold or whatever. I think we can get, we'll see more savings that way.
I think we discussed this as a committee as a whole, and each department's going to have a list of their contracts, the amounts, when they're due, and whether they're bid or not, and if they're not bid, what's the reason?
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Alderman McMenamah?
Mr. Mayor and council, let's hold this in committee and allow our city attorney to draft some language that would spell out the time period within which we'll do a request for proposal after Bill McCarty and Mark Mahoney and city attorney get together and discuss the appropriate timeframe, and then we can pass this with the understanding that we'll have a, the council, that there'll be a requirement for a request for proposal.
My only concern with that is that are we up against, our backs against the wall about purchasing parts? What's the story on that, Mark? Do you know?
Director McCarty?
I was just asking-
He was asking me a question, I'm sorry.
You got to answer the question.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Sent back, if the ordinance is sent, do we have time to send it back to committee and draft an ordinance with regards to the RFP?
Technically, it would be up to Napa at this point. I don't know if Napa has, do you want to come up? It would be up to them because the contract has expired, expired on May 1st.
It expired on the 1st of-
May, this month.
Yes, the contract has expired, so we're operating without one currently, and we do have a tolerance for some time, but, you know, if we could get this done prior to the end of May, I would say would be reasonable.
It would be, how about the first couple of weeks of June? Would that work for you so that we can address the concerns? Because that's when the next meeting will be.
Yeah, we could, we would be willing to do that.
I would just say we can just amend it here. We need to put out an RFP in six months. I mean, plain and simple.
I'll make that motion. Second?
We're still discussing.
Yeah, I have a question.
Alderman Turner?
I don't know if I missed it or not, but did you, did you answer Alderman Redpath's question about why, if this was an extension, why the amount increased $1.24 million?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not. Good point. The contract itself is a cost-plus contract, so it's your actual experience of your parts. So they give us the parts at what they pay for themselves at a wholesale level, and then there's a markup of five or seven or 10%. For instance, I think there's a few things, I forget, maybe tires that are 5%. Anything local is 7%. That was actually an amendment done in the contract per council wishes three years ago. That was added as part of the contract, and Napa was amenable to that. It was just five or 10. The bottom line is, as I mentioned earlier, for several years, Napa had the benefit, or we had the benefit, I should say, of Napa taking on all of our old inventory, which I believe, and Nick may or may not know, was over a million dollars worth of inventory. And they had been managing that inventory at no cost, handing it to us. So if one of our technicians comes up and say they need a widget, and we had a widget that Napa inherited from the shelves of the previous unconsolidated operation, they would give that to our technician at no charge. All those usable parts at this point have been exhausted.
Because we had already paid for it, right?
Right. All of those parts have been exhausted. So Napa gave those to us first and didn't charge us anything for it, but now that those parts have been used up and nothing is left but the obsolete, unusable inventory, now all the stuff has to be basically new parts and so forth. We're paying more- We're paying more because we are using all new parts rather than some of our old parts. That's one thing. The other thing is, there's a direct correlation between the age of our fleet and the amount of repairs that have to be done. And one thing we all know is, our fleet is getting older. We have a lot of old equipment, and we can show you or run reports about how often some of our stuff is actually in the shop on an annual basis, and I think it would surprise you. So as your equipment gets older, we're fixing it more, which requires more parts, which means we spend more money. But one of the things that's nice in the information that I sent you all a couple of weeks ago is if you look at the budgetary difference between the non-consolidated parts operations and the consolidated parts operations, from a budgetary basis, our budget for FY '18, I think is the number I used, is about $900,000 to $1 million less than what it would be in an unconsolidated environment.
So if we don't improve this, can we buy parts somewhere else? How do you do that?
We don't... I don't know how we do that without drastically affecting productivity because we don't have any parts people. We could send our technicians out to get them, but that was one of the complaints back in some of the unconsolidated operation, particularly in one of the garages where the technicians were out quite often chasing out parts rather than working on equipment.
So I think the goal, if what I'm hearing from other people in the council is that we absolutely want an RFP process, and if we're up... If our backs are against the wall to the point where we have to make... We have to pass this contract to... Because we're gonna run out of parts. We almost have to, almost do something tonight to pass this on. But without everybody understanding that, as soon as the RFP process goes out, that things could change. Now, NAPA might come in with a low bid, so it might be moot point. But in order for us to have fairness, that we have to report back to our constituents, we have to make sure that that process takes place. And I know the mayor agrees with us on this, but this shouldn't happen no more. This shouldn't happen in your department, or Public Works Department, or CWLP. This shouldn't happen anymore. Your contracts are getting close to the end. You need to get moving on it so we get that process put in place. It's not about NAPA. This isn't about them. They're a reputable company. They've done good service for us. But the bottom line is, is that this process has got to change. I know the mayor's firm on that too, and that we're gonna work on that, so.
Mm-hmm.
We've got a motion to put out for RFP.
Now, as part of that amendment, I guess I need to ask Corporation Council. I think we have another error on... And it's on our screen, too. The top part and the Section 1 and Section 2 refer to March 1st, but the bottom part of our screen and the fact sheet refer to May 1st.
Correct.
Which one?
I believe May 1st is correct.
May 1st is the date.
So would it be appropriate to add that in to this amendment to change those dates to May 1st?
Certainly.
Then I will do so.
Question. Director, didn't you say last week that this contract is backdated 90 days? I mean, you made some reference to this contract being backdated. So what is the actual date that we're looking at this contract starting?
Well, the contract started apparently May 1st of 2017, but we didn't actually start having any activity until November of... I'm sorry, 2014. Until November of 2014.
Right, but this, what we're discussing now on the screen with these dates, last week you made a comment that the contract was backdated. And so I need to... I'm trying to figure out what day was the contract backdated to? Because if it's already backdated and we're into it, can we legally get out of it?
The original period of the contract was May 1 of 2014 and through May 1 of 2017. So the new extension would be May 1.
So, okay, so... And then what we're dealing with now has not been backdated?
The extension, no. The extension would be May 1, which is just an extension from the ending date of the original contract.
So but... And now, which brings another question, since we're already past May 1, can we get out of this contract legally?
Can we get out of this contract?
Yes, because it's...
We still have the 90 days.
Does it not?
There is a clause to terminate. Yes, that is in there. We can get out of the contract at any point with a termination notice. So if we go down the road to the RFP, which is fine, then what we'll do is, we will proceed with the RFP, and we would provide notice for the termination of the contract should we end up choosing a different provider. And that termination timeline would give us time to plan for the changeover and the disruptions that that would cause. So there really wouldn't be a problem with us in moving forward with an RFP. We certainly can do that and have no problem doing that if that's the wishes of the council. And the six-month time period that's proposed is fine from my standpoint.
What about the increase that was built in? You said, I mean, you mentioned the increase when you're talking to Alderman Redpath. What does that increase amount to? And is it something that we'll have to pay if we put out an RFP? Will we still be responsible for that increase?
I'm not sure I understand. Which increase are we talking about?
Well, you mentioned that there was an increase built into the new contract. And if we're into that new contract, if we put an RFP, and even though we're into 90 days, will we still be responsible for that increase that you had stated when we were talking to Alderman Redpath?
The only increase that is attached to this extension is the fact that we're buying more parts, and so we've increased the value of the contract. And that's what Alderman Turner was questioning and discussing. So we would just be... The only thing we would be responsible for, Alderman, is the cost of the parts that we purchase. And maybe what you're referring to is, if we do switch providers, we would have to purchase the non-NAPA inventory from NAPA, which would be about half a million dollars. Perhaps that's what you're referring to.
So Mayor, we... So where are we at on this? I need a scorecard.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? And then we'd entertain an amendment to go forward with an RFP within six months.
And the correction of the dates.
Yep. Any other discussion on the ordinance?
Was there amendment made to put the RFP out?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, we need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the ordinance.
And who made the amendment?
I seconded... Or I...
Alderman Thailand and seconded by Alderman Hanar.
Other way around, but it doesn't matter.
For six months?
Do you want me to... What I just simply...
To put out an RFP within the next six months.
What I broke down was, the Office of Budget and Management shall prepare and issue an RFP within 180 days of the effective date of this ordinance.
That's good enough. Great.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Do we need to amend the date?
We'll correct it.
Discretionary, okay.
I will correct it. I'll make sure.
So any other discussion on the ordinance as amended?
I guess the only thing I do want to say is, I do want to say to NAPA that this is not anything about your performance or anything. It's about the size of the contract and having transparency to our constituents. There's nothing that you guys have done or could have done better. It's just the numbers.
But you can come in with a lower bid on the contract on the RFP.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now over. And the ordinance passes as amended. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-284, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute...
Yeah, we have to go back.
Yeah, we're 245. Let me move to the end of the agenda.
Which one?
245.
Okay.
They're patiently waiting here.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is number 2017-245, an ordinance authorizing payment of $30,000 to Lincolnland Charity Championship for regional and local marketing and promotion of the PGA Tour Golf in Springfield, June 19th through the 25th, 2017, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $30,000 from unappropriated fund balance for the Office of Budget and Management. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2017-245 on final passage.
I'll move second.
I'll move in second. Discussion?
Yes, please. Mr. Mayor, I speak only for myself, although I know I've had several conversations with other Aldermen, that this is kind of spiraled out to where it's gotten to be about more than just about Web.com. And there's been other charities, other events, other businesses that do things that involve tourism that have come forward feeling as though they are being either slighted or overlooked while we're giving for a second year to Web.com. And in the course of those conversations, I phrased it in the way that I... To these other businesses and charities that I personally felt that this conversation wasn't an "or" conversation, that it was Web.com or their event. I felt that it was an "and" conversation, that we should be doing things for Web.com and other events that bring people into Springfield. And I know you and I had this conversation, and I just want to make it clear to the public, to everyone involved, that the intent here is to bring people to Springfield, to increase the tourism market, to use the dollars that go toward tourism and convention and Visitors Bureau, bringing more visitors to Springfield, using those dollars in ways that bring more people here. Whether it be a barbecue, Blues and BBQ, the Gus Macer, Sliders, the Junior Blues, the Web.com, whatever it is, that if these things are in a position where they could use help, I think that we need to be open to the discussion, just like we are right now with the Web.com. And to that effect, and I know I'm not gonna take complete credit for it because I know that at least Alderman Senior had independently the same thought process I did, that we should possibly set aside a sum of money and then have an application process to where these events, charities can apply for assistance. But I believe that, in my heart, I think they need to show that they actually need the help. We don't need somebody coming in who's already fully funded, sitting, you know, sitting pretty, and they've got plenty of sponsors and everything else, and their event's making enough money for charity, and they're paying their own bills, and they're still having money left over. We don't want somebody who's banking $150,000, $200,000 per event, coming in and asking the city for $50,000. We want it to go to people who need our help to help bring people to Springfield to show off our city. But to that effect, I am saying, I am in support of Web.com. I'm hoping you guys do grow into what we've talked about with Springfield, Missouri. And as I said before, I feel this is an "and" conversation, not an "or."
Well, if you remember, in the budget process, we did set aside part of the hotel motel tax increase. $500,000 goes towards Oak Ridge Cemetery. The rest was supposed to go to a special fund for that purpose. And then it was amended to make it exclusive to downtown. But Corporation Council reviewed it, and by an action of the city council, we can make exceptions to that portion of funds. Is that correct?
That is correct. The... You may recall that there was a provision when the additional percentage was added to hotel motel. And I'm looking at the ordinance now, and it addressed that 14% was to be set aside first for... I'm reading from the ordinance. First from operations and maintenance for Oak Ridge. Second, for special projects to increase downtown tourism or fund specific convention and visitor bureau tourism projects in such amounts as may be approved annually by the city council. So you do have some flexibility if you desire to do that.
Alderman Turner?
I think that Chris raises a... Alderman, I'm sorry, raises a valid point. However, it's nice to talk about how we can do the "and," but from the way I look at the budget, I don't even know that we have money for the initial, much less for the "and." And I know that... So where is this money for the "and" gonna come from in the budget? That's the first piece. The second piece is, we're talking about the hotel motel tax and using that money, but there's no money there yet. I mean, that is... How much money? We don't even get to the $100,000 until we satisfy the amount that was set aside for Oak Ridge Cemetery. The $100,000 is after the Oak Ridge. So, you know, it's not that I am not interested in tourism or supporting an event that would bring tourists here. That's not the case. I think that Springfield is a tourism town. That is our main... Not our main, but one of our main economic engines is tourism. So of course, we want to do everything that we can do to promote tourism. However, we have to be prudent with the dollars that we have. And I know that we provided... After a lot of discussion last year, we provided the $30,000. But no one can tell us what benefit that $30,000 triggered. What benefit did it provide to the Web.com tour event? What benefit did it provide to Springfield? So, you know, and "and," after the discussion about the web... About providing the funding for Web.com, I've had a number of organizations to call me and say, well, why can't we get money? Why can't we get money? Why is it... And then it always... And those types of conversations, whether we want them to or not, always delve down into the location of events, the race and status of the people that are putting on the events, and it becomes a very divisionary conversation. So, you know, I think that unfortunately, there are hard decisions that have to be made. And if someone can point out to me where in the budget we have for the "and," then I'm all for it. But until that, I think we have to be very prudent with the dollars that we have. And again, I just want to reiterate that it's not that the city has not... Is not supporting the event. We have done some marketing for the event. We've done some advertising for the event. So it's not that we have not been in support of the event. I think that there's just only so much that... Only so much we can do with the dollars that we have.
Our Director McCarty, if you... Do you know what the hotel motel tax revenue, if it's coming in, is projected? Or what is it currently? Do you know?
We've just started to getting revenues numbers in for this year, and we haven't done a full analysis yet. But I've talked to Dallas a little bit, and he hasn't given me an indication to believe that there's an issue with the hotel motel tax. I can pull the numbers tomorrow and send it out to Tim, and he can distribute it to everyone.
Okay. And then with regards to benefit, I'd ask Kate Peters come forward, and if you'd like to address that.
I would. I would, I would. I brought you some more information. So, thank you for giving me a few minutes again this evening. I know I've talked to many of you, and I'm here again pleading for your assistance. I know that the budget is tight. I know there's been some discussion about not really knowing what the benefit of the tournament was last year. And so tonight, we've provided you with a recap from the 2016 tournament. Now, what I can't tell you is how this information was conveyed because I was not involved with the tournament for the 2016 year. But we did go back and do some research and fact-checking on the 2016 numbers. There was also communication that was sent, supposedly, to the Aldermen who supported the initiative last year. And so it is so important for you to know that this tournament would not be back this year if it had not had your financial support last year. It is significant to be able to say that we have the city of Springfield behind us as we work with the PGA Tour to solidify the future of this event in years to come. We know that Web.com tour events make an economic impact anywhere $4 to $7 million on the host community. We have done research on the average gallery size for established Web.com tournaments, and the average gallery size is about 24,000 for the week. We're not there yet, but we're headed there. I know that we can account for 1,800 room nights last year. You've got your highlighted points on the first page of your handout. But in 2017, we went back and drilled down into some numbers. And I know it all seems to be tied to heads and beds. I get that. We are... We know that we will have a full field of 156 professionals competing here next month. Based on last year's players who stayed in local housing, we're projecting that 112 of those players will stay in hotels throughout the city. 155 caddies will also be using hotel accommodations as well. Brutal Event Team staff will generate another 132 nights in local lodging. PGA Tour staff accounts for another 182 nights. And then the players that make the cut, so after Friday's round, we cut the field. We estimate that to be about 74 players, seems to be the average. They're gonna stay another two nights each, players in caddies. They're going to stay another two nights each, players and caddies, and that accounts for another hundred and forty-eight nights times two. So if we draw some conclusions from the 2010 Economic Impact Study that I shared with you last week from the LPGA State Farm Classic, we know that overnight visitors spend on average a hundred and thirty-four dollars a night, and that's from 2010. I assume there's been a little bit of fluctuation between now and then. We also know that day visitors spend on average right around a hundred and fifteen dollars a day when they're in your host community. We've got volunteers coming from Nevada, Arizona, Iowa, Illinois, Tennessee, and we had two sign up today from Florida. So we know that we are bringing people to the city of Springfield. I'm not sure what else I can share with you. We are working to build the charitable impact, and so while yes, this event is hosted on the southwest side of Springfield, it is not an event strictly for the southwest side of Springfield. The charitable impact has room to grow, and I believe when we did some research earlier, we know that our charity organizations are, have a broad representation of all the wards that, that you all represent. And so those groups are helping people all over the city. And, you know, the charitable impact last year was just over twenty thousand dollars. There's plenty of room to grow there. When we wrapped up the last LPGA tournament, we made a donation, our total was just shy of four million dollars. We know that that tournament didn't make its first charitable donation until it had been in operation four years, and it was for three thousand dollars in nineteen eighty. So we know there's room to grow, we need your help, we need the city of Springfield behind us, and you're probably not going to find a bigger supporter of professional golf than the fact that it needs to be here in Springfield than the lady standing right here in front of you, so I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Alderman Proctor?
Are these nineteen forty-five nights, are these confirmed bookings, or were these never confirmed?
Well, I can, I can tell you that the hundred and thirty-two room nights for Bruno Event Team staff are confirmed, talked with the PGA Tour, and I know the number of staff that they're sending in between rules officials and meteorologists and, and another special project that they're doing at our event, I know how many room nights they're staying. I'm basing the number of player room nights based on how many did last year, because I don't expect that to change too awfully much. What I can't tell you is how many people travel to our city to, that follow these players. I know that we have a number of players whose families follow them, and they come and they stay in, in the host community as well. I can't, I don't have a sense for that yet, this is my first, this is my first go around, but I'm learning.
Alderman Tyler?
I think one of the questions that either got asked last week or this week is what, what is the thirty thousand dollars being used for at the web.com?
Well, we're using, we, we, I believe, now forgive me, because I wasn't there last year, but it's my understanding that they use it to underwrite general operations, getting the event up and running. We started from scratch, we're still starting from scratch. They did some supplemental marketing in the St. Louis area, and I can attest to that because that lady is very tenacious, just like me, she calls me quite often, and I don't have the budget to purchase that market. So I know it went to, to operations, to supplemental marketing, and I guess I'd leave it at that.
And how much went to charity from the outing?
Last year, the charitable number was just over twenty thousand dollars. So the tournament distributed checks to three designated organizations for a little over fourteen thousand. Then there are a couple of volunteer committees that are tremendously difficult to fill, and the glamorous word for the garbage crew is ecology, and so we pay a charitable group to handle that, and parking. And then Panther Creek also made a twenty-five hundred dollar donation to Southeast High School for their help in various areas that they needed. So the tournament last year generated just over twenty total.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The one thing I could say about the and discussion is, for myself, I'm presenting this ordinance, it's professional golf, and the way I view it is, I think cities should support to some degree professional sports, so I'd be open to, you know, the sliders, Junior Blues, and the golf. Outside of that, and Alderman would probably have to bring in the request, because that's where I'll draw the line. And that's a clear distinction, any professional team, I think we should be supporting them as much as possible, but the fund that we created during the budget process will help at least be sponsors of those particular entities.
Alderman McMinema?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to revise the appropriation amount for this ordinance from thirty thousand down to fifteen thousand, and that all the money come from hotel motel tax and none from corporate fund one oh seven because we've got a tight budget. It's my understanding that there's an accumulation of money in the hotel motel fund of over a million dollars, and so that's my motion. I hope, I hope there's a second on that motion to reduce the funding level from thirty thousand down to fifteen thousand.
Is there a second on the amendment? Second it? Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Any other discussion on the ordinance?
How do I do? I think we all know each other's firm a little bit ago, but...
But if you state it for the record.
Are we still good to take the picture when you get done?
We'll see. Todd Miller, the other of the Springfield Sliders here, and I'll address to twenty North Douglas for you. But several different things, I mean, I know, I just heard of this, which I didn't know about the funds from last year until several of you had spoken with me as well. I know that, I mean, as far as I know, it's for advertising and promotion, it shouldn't be used for operations, so I was interested to hear that point that just came up as well. But I wanted to let you guys know on some of these numbers, because I know I'd spoke with the Hotel Association as well, and they said they were flat, they didn't even see an increase from this, so I'm not sure where all, all these numbers came in, and not that in any way I'm against the web.com tour, we actually partner with them as well, so I want to let you guys know that. I'm not against the tour, I think it's a good thing for Springfield as well, but certainly want to make sure funds are appropriated properly where they should be done as well. We gave more to charity than they did as well last year, we gave over thirty thousand dollars to charity from our season. We spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on advertising and promotion here in this market, so, and we're the only team in our league, and I'm going to go on a limb here and say probably the only one in the nation out of over four hundred teams. It doesn't get city support or funding of any kind. I haven't reached out, because as Alderman Turner said as well, I've always been under the impression that there isn't funding for this, that there isn't a thing, and that's why we haven't reached out. And then when I'd spoken to several of you guys, and I had heard of this, I was less than pleased about knowing that this is even a thing, because for everything that we do here in the community, and everything that we have supported, and bringing in over fifty thousand patrons into the town, that's, and all of our players come from all over the country, some of the best players in the nation, a lot of people want to come out and see them, future professional MLB players, their families come in from all over, obviously stay in our hotels, so we're putting lots of heads in beds, our opponents, when their teams come into town, certainly more heads in beds as well. We have pretty much every hotel fighting over our business in this town, so that's definitely something that we don't take lightly either, and we just certainly want to be thought in that conversation as well. If these monies goes there, I mean, it kind of, and I'm not trying to put any pressure on anybody as well, I mean, it ties our hands as well. I know several of you know this, I think that it has went out in the public a lot more than I like, but after how well we did last season, I mean, I've had many offers to sell the team, to move the team to other markets, and to do other things, and as I stated earlier and before, I mean, I want to be here the long term, I certainly don't want to leave, and I do speak for Dan with the Junior Blues as well, because we chatted about this earlier, he, a lot of people aren't even aware of this, money going to there, and he wasn't aware of it until we chatted a couple of days ago as well. And it's, I guess it is an issue for us as well as him, that that's where that funds go. I mean, we're in Springfield, we're a big community team, we try to bring everybody in here, and as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, we are going to start bringing in other events as well, from concerts and different things here, we're trying to bring a lot of things here into Springfield and do a lot of different things, and obviously, I don't know what's known, I'd certainly be happy to share my budget or what our P and L statements from last year, I mean, we lost close to a hundred thousand dollars last year. The Junior Blues lose more than that, and to keep, same reason, we're the longest tenured team in Springfield history, this will be our tenth season. Teams leave because they don't get support, they aren't able to sustain, you lose a lot of money, you can only do that for so long before you have to move and go to a place that, you know, wants to keep you there and wants to help you out and support you. The other issue is obviously with sponsorship, sponsorship, I'm sure they struggle with sponsorship as well, because we're struggling with that now. Obviously, we compete in that market for sponsorship, and losing several of our key and premier sponsors to the web.com tour or any other event that would come in is well detrimental to us, and when we already lose a hundred thousand dollars, and now to lose at least another thirty thousand in sponsorship to other events, I mean, it's very frustrating and would make it very hard to continue to keep the team and to do things in here. Now, obviously, I'm committed to Springfield, I want to be here, I want to stay here, I have no interest in accepting any of those offers or doing things, which is why I've turned them all down, and I would say probably more than half of you, including yourself, Mayor, already know these things, but it's, it makes it very difficult to see that if money goes out to other things and we are not part of that, what are we doing in Springfield? I mean, why do I fight so hard to keep the team here, to do things here, bring a great quality team here, bring families, patrons, other events? I mean, to me, it feels like it defeats the purpose, and I should quit trying and doing that, and sinking my own money into Robin Roberts Stadium, sinking my own money to fix everything and do everything, because I'm always told, city, park district, any version of that, doesn't have funds to be able to help us, so I said, fine, if that's the case, then I'll do it. Well, now finding out that that is not the case, and that we're willing to do those things, it puts me into a tough predicament and kind of ties my hands as we move forward with other things as well. Certainly be happy to share any of our financials or anything with you guys, so you guys can see those at any time. If anybody has any questions or wants to ask anything, I'd be happy to take those as well.
Alderman Tyler?
Todd, obviously, I know that you've had lots of conversations with Alderman Proctor and I on the, on the subject, and I hope you understand that, like I told you, I would love to find a way, and we're looking at different things we can do. As a matter of fact, one of the things we were looked at, when you brought up about Robin Roberts, both of us kind of started looking into the Robin Roberts lease, and if Corporation Council could explain what I'm about to say, I believe when the Park District spun off, we sold several assets to the Park District, including Lincoln Greens and Robin Roberts Stadium, to them, and in the case of Robin Roberts, we provided for an income stream of property tax to the tune of, is it thirty or forty thousand dollars a year?
It's, I think, seven cents.
Seven percent, something like that, seven cents.
Seven cents on the dollar.
So anyway, it comes out to somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year that we intended, and I, Chuck, you were appearing.
I voted no on that ordinance, by the way.
But it was intended for the upkeep of Robin Roberts Stadium, and since the Park District took that over, I don't believe any of that money is going to the upkeep of the stadium. The Park District has absorbed it into their budget, and they are not spending any of that money on the upkeep of Robin Roberts Stadium at all. So we've got thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money that was intended to go into the upkeep of the stadium as a condition of the sale of the stadium, and they're not spending it there.
You know, if anybody comes out and wants to come check out our infield now, we are going to be the laughing stock of the league as far as how our infield is concerned, I'm embarrassed for the high school teams playing on there, it's not even the high school part. It does make it difficult. I mean, at this time, I mean, there's, I've chatted with our grounds crew, unless we have a professional grounds crew come in to fix it in the next two weeks, it's just not even going to be feasible to get it up to where, where we would like it to be, obviously. Well, I don't have another facility, we're playing this season, we're moving forward. It's, uh, does make it tough to do that, obviously, with the facility when different things there. I mean, I'm going out now, I'm just running Wi-Fi throughout the park, so that way we can open up another concession stand and get our, so we don't continue to lose as much money when, you know, we don't have internet there, so we take credit cards, we bring them into the office at the end of the night, oh, this one was declined, this one was declined, this one, so you're just losing money after you already gave out the product, because, well, we don't have internet. Now, I mean, I'm paying out of that to go do that as well, which is no problem, you know, painting the facility last year, that was ten thousand dollars, that could have been spent on other things, but it did, well, I don't know if anybody else drove by the ballpark, it looks a million times nicer than it did. I mean, just painted it up, fixed some things, I mean, obviously the fencing in the outfield, we finally just got rid of that terrible eyesore that was on the fence, so we just, it was a SJR old scoreboard thing that we used for a few weeks, I don't know, the whole thing doesn't make sense to me at all, but we finally just tossed it in the dumpster. A lot of our equipment and things that we were provided originally when I came in, obviously was also not up to par, we had, I went and bought out all brand new equipment last year. So just being able to spend those money on things, obviously it affects our bottom line, and, well, I mean, it's not fun to go lose a hundred thousand dollars every year and want to continue doing it. Not sure what Dan and the Junior Blues are in that as well, because, I mean, no, no professional sports team in Springfield has ever made a profit, it has never been done. And whether we would ever be the first or not, I mean, that's going to be difficult. But obviously, I do it for the enjoyment, for the love, I want these players to succeed, I want them to get them to the next level, that's why getting these players drafted is a huge thing for us, obviously getting them into our community, immersing them in our community, getting them to be a part and support the community and want to do things here. They don't forget who gave them that chance and who gave them that start. All those kids that were with our host families, they all stay in contact, you make to the pros, they don't forget where they came from. I mean, it's definitely a huge thing for Springfield to keep that here and to do that. Same thing with the Junior Blues, I mean, you want to have sports, I mean, without them, I don't know what anybody else is going to do during the summer. I would say that's the number one thing that anybody should be doing, is coming out to the Sliders games. We broke national records last year, we set a Robin Roberts attendance record of over fifty-two hundred at a single game, even when we had the triple A Cardinals, they never broke five thousand. So to be able to do those types of things, we're ranked in the nation as high as eighteenth in power rankings and attendance out of over four hundred teams. This market, we've never even done. I know for certain we've never broken in the top fifty, I want to say the top hundred, but I'm not a hundred percent factual on that. But just to be able to do those things, and to be the only team in the nation ranked in the top twenty in both of those categories last year, I mean, that, that's something that speaks volume of what we're able to do here. Obviously, the city, the community, the people want us to stay here, they want to come out to games, they want to do things, but financially, being, being able to do that without business support, without obviously city, and without some other things, I mean, it makes it very difficult and a hard feat for us. And then being able to swallow the pill, knowing we don't get that, and then it's going out to an outside source, makes it an even more difficult pill to swallow.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah. Todd, you're a great asset for the north end, I appreciate everything you've been doing, and I think we need to focus on protecting the organizations and the assets we have in town. Not, not in the golf tournament, I think it's a great thing for Springfield too as well, but I think we need to protect what we have and grow what we have here. And I'd just like to kind of put this out there, Director McCarty, in the CPV fund, what is the current balance? We talked about this last week.
The fund balance from the last audited financials from the end of FY16, the fund balance was one point nine million.
So about two million dollars, and over the past five years, how large has that grown from one number to two million?
It's grown quite a bit over the last few years.
Okay. So there is no shortage of funds to promote tourism in Springfield, it sounds like, we're not tapping?
I'm going to defer the answer to that question to Director.
It wasn't a question. It wasn't a question.
Well, she should come up.
Definitely.
Because I know that part of the reason for the growth is staffing shortages and some other things that have been done, so I'd be more comfortable with her answering those questions.
Well, there are needs that need to be addressed, definitely, but we keep referring to the extra hundred thousand that was part of when we did the budget, and, you know, it's great that, you know, we have that extra money, but it's not exactly, we didn't really need that exactly just for that particular purpose when we have two million in the fund, if we can do it for other things.
But that wasn't the purpose, the purpose, real quick, the purpose of that was for the administration to come before the council with ancillary sponsorships of activities. That's why the fund was created. It wasn't to piggyback on what Convention Visitors Bureau was doing, and it was because this ordinance that was brought up last year, we went down this road previously, and that's why we created the fund with the hotel motel tax increase from last year, or this year, rather. So the five hundred thousand, first five hundred thousand goes to Oak Ridge Cemetery, and the remainder goes into that fund to sponsor activities like we're talking about tonight. But as you know, Convention Visitors Bureau, as well as the hotel motel group, they were against the sponsorship of the tour, and I did get a email today from Darren, Darren Dean, yep, he sent a letter, I'll just read it real quick. Says, "Dear Mayor and Alderman, we are well aware that there are some great passion to add events to the city that could potentially create more national recognition to the city of Springfield. One event proposed to achieve this goal is the web.com golf tournament. I'm writing to you to inform you that the SHLA is opposed to..." I'm writing to you to inform you that the SHLA is opposed to using funds from CBB to directly sponsor or support the tournament. Since we believe we have been clear in this communication over the last year, we do not believe it is necessary to speak at City Council on this matter." And it's signed by Darren Dade, the Springfield Hotel Lobbying Association, uh, President.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to that.
I want, yeah, I want to ask, um, if you're going to read, if we're going to be allowed to read text, I think everybody in here should be able to read a text that they receive either in support or against it. I mean, I think you're opening up a Pandora's...
Sure, sure. Go ahead. No, if you want to, you can.
That we're reading it, because I have, I, I received four or five texts in support of it. And I don't think that we should open ourselves up to that, because we'd be here two or three days. And...
Can I?
In response to you, to, to you, Todd, you know, you and I, we talked and, and, um, I think we have to take each event on its own merit. Um, in, in your situation, I think it's different than the web.com. And, you know, there's things that, if they need to be done for you, then you should bring that to our attention and not come at a point where we're, we're talking about another event. It seems, you know, this doesn't seem that this is the place, if there's something that you need done, and you're here and you've done a lot of great things, because we've moved to a couple of games. You know, maybe we should sit down and talk and find out what your needs are, so we can address those. And, but we need to be talking about the web.com, Tom, web.com tour and finding out if it is something that we want to, uh, support and if we're going to go forward with it and address your situation and the Junior Blue situation at a later time, because you are all great, are great assets to the, to the city. And I respect what you're doing out there, you know? So, I don't know, Mayor, if we should move forward.
I'd like to respond to the email from the Hotel Motel.
Sure.
My one thing is that I don't, I'm not knocking Hotel Motel Association, but when we go to spend motor fu, motor fuel ta, funds, we don't go around and ask the gas station to collect it, whether we should be using it for certain things. The Hotel Motel Association is collecting a tax that we imposed on them as a city. They are not, they don't get a choice about whether or not they're going to collect it. They don't have an option of whether or not they're going to collect it. They're collecting it because we passed an ordinance creating that tax. That money then comes in, it goes into the proper funds, which in this case, a lot of it does go to CBB. And the CBB money is then spent using city coun, sometimes city council direction, sometimes not. Sometimes the mayor has his discretion if it's under a certain threshold to just make a decision. But my comment is, is that I don't have a problem with the Hotel Motel Association coming in and giving their opinion, especially because, as they said, that this is part of tourism and tourism is heads and beds. But on the flip side of it, I want them to understand that this tax money is coming in for the city of Springfield. It's not the hotel's tax money. It's part of our pot that goes to the citizens, to this whole city. It's not the hotel's tax money. This isn't their money purse. And I want that to be very clear, because a couple of conversations, and I'm not saying it's all of them, but a couple of their representatives don't understand that.
Could we, uh...
Gina?
Could we get back to the ordinance in hand?
Yep.
I, this is a discussion that needs to be taken place in committee or, or sec, or a subcommittee somewhere, but we need to get back to the vote on this, uh, on this ordinance, if we could, please.
Yeah, if you'd like to address two things. One is the budget.
Um, our fund has grown significantly the last couple of, two to three years, and it's because of staffing and lapsing dollars. But we are real concerned about protecting that fund as well, just because what's happening with the state and our state grant funding. We don't know if come July, we will have state grant funding, um, again for this next fiscal year. So, we do like to keep a little of it protected, just because we don't know what is happening with those state funds. Um, I would also like to mention, you know, you're talking about other events. Just keep in mind, Springfield hosts over twenty-five-hundred conventions and meetings each year, and there's over, there's between three and four hundred local events and other events happening. So, we get the request quite frequent, frequently in our office for funding.
Call the questions. So, um...
We got, you want to make an amendment?
Yeah, you got to vote on the...
It got voted in.
There was no amendment.
No, there's no second.
No.
Or we voted on them. That was like yesterday.
Nobody seconded.
Yeah.
Doris seconded. Doris seconded. We voted.
Oh, yeah, we already voted on it.
You did not.
So, now we just got the...
The ordinance as presented.
Yep. Voting on the ordinance as presented. So, uh, vote for yes is to fund the web.com for thirty thousand dollars. Voting is now open.
Seven heads to the wall, have you, Mayor?
Somebody want to help the mayor vote?
Thank you. Any ordinance passes six voting yes, by voting no. Next item on the agenda is number two thousand seventeen dash two eighty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit to the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA, conditional commitment letter APP five-one-three-zero-zero for assistance in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for demolition of abandoned residential property under the Abandoned Residential Property Municipal Relief Program for Emergency Passage. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
They're moving in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eleven in voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number two thousand seventeen dash two eighty-five, an ordinance approving the final plat of Prairie Land Minor Subdivision for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage.
So moved.
It moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now... The ordinance passes eleven voting yes, none voting no. Uh, Director McCarty, you want to give your presentation or...
Someone wake up.
Do we do it at the committee as a whole?
Or do you want to do it at the committee as a whole?
Yeah, let's do it.
A little updated at committee as a whole.
I'm on vacation.
Actually, I think the information's outdated at this point in time of the night.
Do it again.
So, he will, he will include the hotel motel tax revenue at that one, right?
Are we starting on budget right after this?
Mike wants to. Is there any new business come before the City Council? Alderman, Tyler?
A question that came up on an ordinance that was on consent agenda. I had somebody who wanted to know that with our workman's comp contract that we have with the lo, local law firm, um, do we have an idea of about what kind of record they have? Like, how many denials do they have compared with, like, how many denials, how many times do they go to court, how many times do they settle? If we could get kind of a tally sheet of like the last three years, um, I think that would be helpful. And then, um, when was the last time that this was actually bid out was the other question, if you could get that for us.
Corporation Council will take care of that.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, new business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we don't meet next week. The committee as a whole does not meet next week, so don't show up here. We get two, two weeks off.
They deserve it after tonight.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Todd, Todd, why are you still here?
Oh, he's got to take our picture.
Todd, why are you still here? You want to come up and, got a couple of questions. I know you might be mad. I mean, we, I still love you. Um, you all have a program where, where you have host families for your players?
We do.
Um, can you tell us how that's going and what you...
Uh, we are still in the search for host families. I really appreciate you bringing that up. I, uh, should have said earlier when we were chatting, um, we had a couple of host families that decided that, one decided to take a break this year, then the others followed suit to say, well, we'll all come back next year and put us into a tougher bond than if just one took off every year. So, we now are in the need to host several players. So, if there is anybody that can host, we do offer several things. It's mostly, you just need a room. We have, uh, I mean, I can furnish it, beds, dressers, anything of that nature. Uh, we have several different, uh, we offer free season tickets, discounts on merchandise, uh, different things of that nature. We have a host family appreciation night. They'll come out, be honored on the field, do those types of things. Uh, we do have a host family dinner before the season as well, where it's a meet and greet with all the players, all the other host families, uh, to get everybody more involved. Um, so it is, uh, I mean, it's a great thing for, uh, them to have, especially if you have a kid. Uh, you know, it's basically like their own baseball coach that they just kind of live with for a little while. And, uh, it really works out. I mean, everybody that has done it, we haven't lost any host families. The ones that are taking this year off are coming back next year. I mean, that, that is happening, but for, for it to take off at one time, it did put us into a, uh, tough spot. So, we are looking for several host families to, uh, be able to help us out this season. Uh, we, most of the guys will come in around May twenty-eighth, so we're about two weeks out. Our season starts on the thirtieth. And then, uh, I plan to play till August thirteenth, which means we're going to win the championship. So, that means we have about two and a half months of the season, thirty dates we are on the road in other cities. So, uh, there's really no needs there. We're off on Mondays. It's really the only time that there is a real requirement of the host families. The guys are out of the house by ten AM and we feed a dinner basically through the night. They, after the game, ten, eleven o'clock, will be back in the household. Well, they better be going to sleep at that point and then waking up refreshed in the morning, ready to play another game, since we play sixty games in sixty-five days. We, uh, need them refreshed and relaxed. And we, uh, you know, certainly I don't want to go rent an apartment and throw them somewhere. You know, we want them to be with the host family. We want them being part of the economy. We want them, uh, being part of Springfield and being a part of the community here. So, uh, it's easier to immerse them in the community when they're with the host family, and I think that's a great thing for Springfield. And it's always been a great thing. We've always had great host families, certainly, uh, no issues with anything of any kind. And, uh, so if anybody doesn't know of anybody who would like to be a part of the host family, uh, part, uh, we're certainly open to that and really looking, uh, for that. And, I mean, we are about two weeks out. So, uh, I mean, it is more of a matter of, uh, coming up to the plate here soon. We do have...
And how do they contact you?
Uh, they can, you know, call myself. I have no problem getting...
Or do you want to...
Call the office on, our website, our e, uh, email address. I mean, you can...
What's your office line?
Office line is six-seven-nine-thirty-five-eleven.
Six-seven-nine?
Yep.
Thirty-seven-eleven?
Thirty-five-eleven.
Oh, thirty-five-eleven. And then the website again?
Uh, website is springfieldsliders.com. And, I mean, you can go to my email, toddm@springfieldsliders.com. Correct.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to reiterate your comment. That's the worst Springfield I've seen in forty years of Robert Morris. It's terrible.
It's not. I actually found out today. It hasn't been resurfaced in, uh, three seasons. That's what the grounds crew told me today. And, uh, I mean, he told me there's, the only way we would be able to get it done is if we, you know, had, had some outside source come in to be able to do it. I mean, it's not going to take to the ground if they do it between now and then. So, it's, I mean, certainly it's tough to, tough to take a look at. Obviously prevents, you know, safety concerns as well, you know, obviously for the players, whether it's high school players, college players. Obviously, Robert Morris plays there as well. Uh, Springfield High, Lanfer, S.H.G., uh, Southeast, and then obviously the Sliders as well. And our future goal is obviously to bring in youth tournaments. We're the only sixty-nine-year field around that can host those types of things. Obviously, with Southeast and Chamberlain as well. So, uh, to be able to hold youth league tournaments, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen U, uh, softball tournaments, things of that nature, that's a future goal of ours as well. So, to be able to obviously get the field up bars of need.
That's why I ran so slow two years ago, because of the infield.
You didn't even convince...
You didn't even get to the grass.
Well, thank you, Todd.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Couple other items, uh, I'd ask Chief Wayne Winslow to come forward, please, and talk about the police awards program and the annual report, if you'd like to distribute that real quick.
Hello. Yesterday, we had our, uh, annual awards banquet, uh, with the help of several hosted, uh, agencies to help us put it on out of the whole church. With that, we have our annual report. I'd like to present to each one of you. Uh, there'll be a press release tomorrow on the award winners, et cetera. So, if you've seen the officers, if you'd like to pay your respects to them. A lot of great work done last year. Uh, unfortunately, it's only so many award winners, and sometimes the difference between a nominee and award winners are the smallest of margins. But a lot of great work done last year by a lot of the officers in Springfield this part.
And then the memorial, Tapscott Memorial signage was put up too as well?
Yeah, that was a couple of weeks ago, of the ninth and Converse. I think we talked about that here, actually. Uh, not coming out, but basically Connor, also Tapscott, who was killed in nineteen seventy-nine, uh, December twenty-sixth, had a head-on accident with the Senate pile of ninth and northern, of ninth and Converse, that underfished.
And then, uh, the deadline to apply to become a police officer is this Sunday, May thirty-first at eleven PM?
May twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Yep. So, you need to go to the website? Is that just on the city's general website?
Yep, they can go to that or they can go to our website. There's a link to it. Uh, we're taking an application, I think, to eleven PM, I believe it is. Uh, if anybody has any questions, they can give us a call or give HR a call. We won't have to answer any questions. I think right now we're floating somewhere around two hundred and seventy-five approximately average so far.
Very good. Thank you. Any other items? I have a few announcements. Uh, tomorrow, residents are encouraged to bike to work as part of the Curb Your Car Week. People are asked to meet at Washington Park Pavilion, by the playground at seven-thirty AM, and ride to Cafe Moxo downtown. And it's also the kickoff this weekend. It's pretty busy for Springfield. It's a kickoff, the Old Capitals Farmer's Market that runs from eight AM till twelve-thirty on, uh, Wednesdays moving forward through October. And then on Saturday, May twentieth, I think that's the official kickoff, isn't it, Alderman? Uh, the market resumes that same time, and the ribbon cutting this Saturday is at ten-thirty. And then also on Saturdays, uh, Pride Fest is downtown. I think they start with the, uh, parade and then a ribbon cutting at noon on the Fifth and Capitol. And the Old State Capitol Art Fair on Saturday and Sunday at the Old State Capitol Grounds is from ten to four. And then on Friday, May nineteenth, is the Race for the Cure, starting at five o'clock, uh, by the Capitol Building. And then the only other item I have is, uh, we did receive four proposals or RFPs with regards to the Y Block, and we're, uh, pulling together a advisory group that will kind of vet the projects. And then, um, they'll go through the process with the Economic Development Commission, and then a recommendation to the City Council. Hopefully, we'll be through that process by July.
Um, my wife...
Alderman, Seonar?
My wife wanted me to announce that our son graduated this Sunday from Quincy University, and we are having an open house at Godfathers from six to nine on Thursday, May the eighteenth. We're asking everybody to stop by for a few minutes, have some pizza and something to drink.
The one on Dirksen?
Yes, sir, the one on Dirksen.
Come hungry. Herman's buying.
Yep, I'm buying.
So, is there any residents to address the council? If you state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Tracy Burke and I'm homeless. Um, I came before the council last week, and, um, I tried to get in touch with you, Mayor, and your secretary would not patch the message through. She said that, um, we had to go to Juan. I tried to call...
Right.
A couple of times. And, um, we've been dealing with Juan, but, um, as of right now, we haven't found nothing yet.
Yeah, I know. He's been looking and trying to, uh, get assistance with regards to apartment rent, and that's what he's working on now. But have you tried any of the other shelters?
Um, there's only one shelter. I'm not helping hands, and they won't take them. Salvation Army decided not to open the shelter.
Well, the other item is the overflow shelter, and, uh...
That closed down.
That's what we need to, we're working on a plan to have that open year round. But that, uh, that's something that's long-term in the planning. But, uh, do you have Juan's number?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. But if you'd, uh, contact him tomorrow. I know he's been working on that, trying to, uh, pull together the resources for a one-month, uh, assistance.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals to address the council?
I don't know if you remember when you guys passed the garbage, uh, ordinance that they have to pick up the garbage if they drop it on the ground? Okay. I would like to get paid thirty-five dollars an hour for the last five hours, because I have picked up that much garbage. And this is terrible, because we shouldn't have that in this town. If garbage people want to have a contract with this town, they need to go by the rules. And if they don't go by the rules, they need to be fined. I don't care if you fine them two dollars. They need to be fined. And another thing is, if you guys keep saying that you have taken care of that, has taken care of it, but I don't see anybody out there taking care of it. And not only that, I found a lot of stuff on the road that fall off of trucks that are not covered, that are required by law to be covered if you're carrying a load, and nobody even looks at those. And then, when you make a phone call to nine-one-one, my favorite subject, it, they ask... it, they ask exactly where that part is and what post it's at, which I understand might be helpful. But we need to take care of the garbage, Mayor. It's tiring to go out there and see them sit in the car with that little arm to pick up that garbage and put it in there, but yet it comes back over on the street. And they don't get out to pick it up. And I remember that you said that in that ordinance that you passed not more than a couple of months ago, or three months ago, or last year. And they don't abide by it. So why do you pass the ordinance for these garbage people that are not getting nothing, are not doing it, Mayor? Because they're sloppy. And I mean they're sloppy. It's just not waste management. It's that other thing, ally, okay? They can do it. They come down on the road, they pick up the garbage cans, they toss them in the back, or they pick that thing that's on that site and toss them in there, and never look to see if it's got in there. And they expect everybody else to pick it up. And that's not fair. That's not fair to any. Any of you Aldermen that have passed it, worked hard to keep this city nice and clean, and want visitors to come in, how would they expect to be at a host house and all of a sudden the garbage is being picked up and all of a sudden, half of it's coming back in? What kind of impression is that? I wouldn't want one, okay? That's why I try to keep my neighborhood clean. And I think Mahoney can tell you that his hot, his phone runs hot when I get on my-
I know. We are gonna have a follow-up meeting with the waste hauler, so I appreciate you letting us know that. But the quickest way to wake them up is, uh, the ones you talk about are, have automatic. My waste hauler, they have individuals that do the dumping. So, uh, there's always that option to change your waste hauler. So, uh-
Oh, I have changed my waste hauler a long time ago-
So you might want to inform the neighbors as well.
But that's not the point. The point is, they need to learn to do their job. They're getting paid. There's a lot of people out here that need a job that probably could do a heck of a lot better than what they got now. I'm serious.
Well, we will pass that along to the waste haulers. But, again, if someone's dissatisfied with their waste hauler, I advise them to change it, just like any other-
Well, I've changed mine, but that's not why some of them do it.
Have services too.
And another thing, these people that you're paying sixty dollars to mow these grasses? They're horrible.
Director Mahoney, do you wish to address that?
Well, he already knows. And so does, uh-
Oh, okay.
But I think it's time for you people to really get the work done, get them cleaned up, and get going. And making this city look like it's a city and not somebody outdoors' place.
We're trying, and we appreciate your help in doing that.
And take care of the food mart. Please.
Food bank.
Yeah, that place over there. That one. You guys, I know, it's, I know it's very hard for you to understand. But when you go and get food for seniors and things are about four months past due, you know, and you want to feed it to the seniors, I don't do that. My garbage can, I have one for the garbage can for all the food. I fall, fall away from the food bank. And that's not right. And it, it really not right. And I'm sorry to bring it so late at night about that stuff, but I'm sorry. I hope you have a nice picture with the sliders.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
And I'm sorry I dropped this thing.
That's right.
Sorry it didn't work anyway, apparently.
So Alderman Repath, do you have a motion? All in favor?
Thirteen elected to come down here to the horseshoe. Chuck, right now, we're gonna get the picture, get it done. The baseball card we're promoting, we're gonna-